Heard what Oklahoma approved, their governor?
What?
So, science showing that certain deer have certain genetic markers that make them. Deer that have those genetic markers and release them on your property. So they're trying to push that genetic marker out. So, I don't think Kansas will do it, but Oklahoma's doing it. What it's gonna do is Oklahoma's become a super popular spot for shooting deer.
Well, surely, because we turn away 10,000 hundred a year.
Huh?
Kansas turns away 10,000 out of state.
Yeah.
Okay, so you ready?
Yeah. Is this on?
Well, it's not amplified.
Oh, it's non-amplified?
No, but it's.
It's recording? Okay.
All right, we're gonna get started.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the first meeting is for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, we're gonna, the order we're gonna go is we're gonna call the order, hearing procedures, roll call, announcement of quorum, approval of the June tenth, two thousand nineteen, public hearing minutes. Why is that so late?
Okay, so a couple of things, we're gonna have to, everybody's gonna have to be very quiet. We don't have amplification here, and Josh will speak louder. Um, I will turn the air down, but then it may get warm, or, I guess.
This is just for recording, not for.
It's for recording and for live stream purposes. So, sorry, we have to do a special election first. So, sorry, that's quick now.
Okay, so we gotta do a special election first because our chairman and vice chairman are not here tonight, so we're gonna do that real quick.
Okay, so, can I hear a motion for a special chairman for tonight?
I would move to appoint Josh as the special chairman.
Second.
Rosa Cabasos?
Aye.
Ken Corbett?
Aye.
Chad Gerhardt?
Aye.
Josh Greening?
Aye.
With unanimous vote in favor, Josh will chair the meeting.
Okay, thank you for your attendance and participation. Purpose of the public hearing is to gather information from the public to help the commission form- formulate recommendations in order to ensure a fair and orderly meeting where everyone can participate. The commission requests that you act respectfully to everyone in attendance and follow the public hearing procedures. Chairperson will call the public hearing item. The planning department will present the staff recommendation. Commissioners may ask questions of the staff. Presentation by applicant and/or representatives. Commissioners may ask questions of the applicant. Chairperson will open the public hearing. Chairperson will call for public comments from persons in support of the items, followed by persons in opposition of the item. The applicant, those, you, each person will have four minutes to talk. Uh, you don't have to talk four minutes, but that's what you'll have. The applicant will have a chance for rebuttal comments. The chairperson will close the public hearing. Commissioners may ask questions and then discussion amongst ourselves, and then we'll take an action. Speakers must speak from the podium and state their name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to establish a time limit, it's four minutes. The designation of the spokesperson for group sharing a common point of view is encouraged. All comments and questions will be directed to the chair from the podium, not to the applicant, staff, or audience. When the hearing is closed, additional public comments are not permitted. Uh, roll call.
Josh Greening?
Here.
Chad Gerhardt?
Here.
Ken Corbett?
Here.
Rosa Cabasos?
Here.
Four members present, there is a forum.
Uh, first item up.
We'll wait, we'll wait, sorry, we need to go back to.
The minutes.
Approval of minutes. Okay, so the minutes, first item we have is approval of the June tenth, two thousand nineteen Board of Zoning Appeal Public Hearing Minutes. And no, that is not a typo. June tenth, two thousand nineteen is the last time that the Board of Zoning Appeals met. Uh, and so there's not been another opportunity for the Board of Zoning Appeals to approve the minutes from that night. And so you have in front of you the minutes from, uh, June tenth, two thousand nineteen, and if anyone would make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Chad Gerhardt?
Yes.
Ken Corbett?
Yes.
Josh Greening?
Yes.
Rosa Cabasos?
Yes.
With four in favor, the June tenth, two thousand nineteen Board of Zoning Appeal Minutes are approved.
Um, next up are communications from the public to staff. And the only item I'm gonna address right now are the ones under the Board of Zoning Appeals in regards to Kristen Henches' case. Um, I did not receive any comments from any public that I need to re- report.
Okay, is there any ex- Declaration of Ex parte Communications on any agenda item?
For the Board of Zoning Appeals.
For the Board of Zoning Appeals. Declaration of Conflict of Interest by commission or staff? Nope.
Okay, so first up is our public hearing item, E twenty-four oh one, Kristen M. Henches. Okay, so in this situation, what you're looking at is an exception to the Shawnee County zoning regulations, Article Two, Section two oh two of the provisional uses for a daycare facility type one. What is being asked is that you eliminate the requirement that the structure be inhabited as a dwelling unit, or that the daycare, uh, the type one daycare be conducted in the residence dwelling unit. This is all happening out on one hundred and first street in Auburn Township. So, the original situation, this has kinda been going on for a few months. The original situation is that the applicant had indicated she wanted to open a type two daycare. A type two differs from a type one in that a type one daycare typically, uh, is run from a home. A type two is what we in the planning and zoning world consider a center. So she'd originally wanted to do a daycare center, and when she came to our office, we talked to her about rezoning her property to O and I. Um, in Shawnee County, the earliest that you can open a type two daycare center in the zoning districts is really the O and I district. They're typically not allowed in the RA, they're typically not allowed in the RR. So rezoning to O and I was the best that we could do to make sure that she could open and operate her type two daycare. We let her know at the time that we were not opposed to having a daycare center open, that we would do what we could to help move that forward. It is spot zoning, and so there was some concern about rezoning the property to O and I. It, it is located out in very, very far southwest Shawnee County, and to have O and I district out there is very unusual, the remainder of the area surrounding it is RA. Um, as time went on, we discussed whether it was possible to, to do this as a conditional use permit instead, and what that would've meant is that we would've maintained her RA zoning, but then asked you to consider and approve a conditional use permit. It is not typical that you do a conditional use permit for this type of daycare, because as I said, typically where you see a daycare center starts off in this O and I zone, but we were trying to come up with a method of approving the daycare without rezoning to O and I, because it, it is a pretty large step to rezone from RA to R, uh, O and I out at this location. Upon further discussion, it was decided that she didn't want to do the daycare center or didn't intend to do the daycare center at this time. What she really wanted was to operate a type one daycare. And when we look at the definitions for the Shawnee County zoning regulations, a type one daycare is limited to a dwelling unit that's inhabited by the applicant. Typically, we don't even hear or see type one daycares in front of the zoning appeals or the planning commission because they're allowed by right. However, in this situation, uh, the difference is that the applicant doesn't live in the home in which she plans to run the daycare. She owns the home, she lives around the corner from the home. Her, the, the home is surrounded by farm ground that she and her family farm, and it's very close to her home, but she doesn't actually live in the property. And so, um, state childcare licensing allows you to live within, or to operate a daycare, a group home daycare like this, without living there, and so there were a lot of discussions about why is it that our regulations require you to live there? And the answer is, that's just the way that it is, that's the definition, that's the way that they've been written for a long time. And so, the, the next step is how can we make a modification to that? Is there a way to, to get around that definition? And the answer to that is to look in our zoning regulations where it allows a Board of Zoning Appeals to grant an exception. As you can clearly see, the Board of Zoning Appeals rarely meets, so exceptions, variances, um, vacations, those types of, well, not vacations, variances and exceptions are very rarely heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, typically, if you're hearing a lot of appeals or exceptions to the rule, then maybe the rule needs to be changed, and so, uh, we, we just don't have very many items that actually come in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals. So if you look at the regulations that allow you to do an exception, it's vague, open, really doesn't give you any direction of what it is that you can do. You do have the power to grant an exception to the district regulations. You can maintain conditions that govern the design, construction, or operation. You also wanna consider the health, safety, and welfare of the occupants of the adjoining and surrounding properties. So, what is it that you're looking at? Well, it's an exception to a rule. And that's what I'm asking you to do tonight, we need to grant an exception to the rule whereby she doesn't have to live in the property, um, but we'd be able to operate this type one daycare. Here is, uh, an image of the vicinity map. In red is her property where the home is located. The ground surrounding it is farm ground that she owns. Uh, the picture doesn't show where her house is in relation to it, but if you keep going further south and a little bit more west, that's where her house is, along these same roads. This is the thousand feet property notice. Her home and two other properties are within that thousand feet, or her, her farm ground, and two other properties are within the thousand feet. Now, I will say that we published this originally in the newspaper as a conditional use permit, and that's what originally was going out. This change to an exception happened after publication, because this is a downgrade from a conditional use permit, it's a lesser modification. We did not, uh, make an adjustment to notification or to publication in the newspaper. If anybody showed up to contest a conditional use permit today, what we would've been able to explain to them is we're not actually going forward with the conditional use permit, we're going forward with just an exception. Um, recommendations, I recommend that you would approve this, subject to the conditions that were set forth in the staff reports. Most of this is probably required by childcare licensing, but we wanted to make sure that the well water is gonna be tested. I do believe that that's actually happened, and she's been working with environmental health, he just hasn't had an opportunity to get his report, but once that report is done, he'll send it to my office to keep with our file. Um, she would need to comply with any requirements. The same would be, uh, the inspection on the septic tank, have it pumped and require, uh, comply with any requirements on that. Our public works department did wanna ensure that she has a free flow of traffic in and out of the property. Cars should not be stacking up or parking on southwest one hundred and first. Um, they need to have at least two vehicle, or automatic drop spot for at least two vehicles on the property, um, and she does have that in her site plan. She needs to follow all local and state childcare licensing requirements, any fire marshal requirements that are set forth for daycares, which we don't oversee, we just indicate that that needs to occur. Um, and then this exception would only apply to this applicant, so long as she owns the property and it's not transferable to someone else. If anybody else were to purchase that property and want to operate a daycare, they would also have to come in and ask for a rezoning or a conditional use permit or an exception, unless the zoning regulations are different at the time that that would occur. Um, I have no other comments on this.
Does anybody have any questions for Joni?
Uh, Joni, I have a couple of questions. How many square feet is it again?
The home?
The daycare.
The daycare, it's the full house, I would defer that to the applicant when she gets up, if you can ask her how large the daycare is, but it's the full house.
And, do you, do you know whether they have options of rural water?
They do not have rural water, it's on a well, um, and that's why the well needed to be tested, and I believe she can answer some of these as well. I do believe that she's installing a reverse osmosis system within the home, and is also going to provide for drinking water, she's gonna use coligene bottled water because of the fact that it's well water, just to, uh, provide that extra level of safety.
And the last one is, they're doing a pumping on the septic instead of laterals?
Well, it, it would just be to clean the tank out, they have, they have laterals and a regular septic as normal. It's just typically when you see a change of ownership or a new, uh, project started, we require that septic tanks be pumped, they should be pumped at least every two years, and so that's what that's about.
So we're gonna move the, open the public hearing, so if the applicant would like to come up and talk.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me here today and, um, coming together to work on this exception. I am Kristen Henches, I live at one oh seven four eight Southwest Carlson Road, Harveyville, Kansas, six six four three one, that is the furthest southwest corner of Shawnee County. My husband and I own the forty acres there, and now we own the three twenty farm property, as well as I purchased my father's home after he passed away in May of twenty-one. That is the project and the address at hand today, that is one three five two five Southwest one hundred and first street, Harveyville, Kansas, six six four three one. I've come to understand that leaving your child in the care of another person is one of the hardest parts of parenting. As a mother of three children, I have been dealt tough decisions when it comes to childcare. When you find a place and provider to match the love and care that can be replaced while you are continuously providing for your family, I feel that you have found peace. My intentions with Five Acres Daycare is to provide just that. Through hands-on play, crafts, agricultural, environment adventure, and continuous outdoor play, the children of our community will thrive and hopefully want to return to our multi-county community to raise their families. Where our facility sits, it is in a unique part of our state. The address is one-fourth mile east from the Wobonzie County line, and we are one mile north of the Osage County line. Our school district, USD three thirty Mission Valley, serves multiple counties and even out-of-district students, many of which are Shawnee County residents. Our address is the place I grew up, the place my kids know as Grandpa Rodney's house, the place our community's youth will know as their second place for a safe, healthy environment for growth. I'm coming to you today as a lifelong Shawnee County resident, a multi-generational landowner, and an alumni of USD Mission Valley School District, to approve the exception set forth to you today to allow Five Acres Daycare to operate as a type one daycare facility with an owner provider who lives off premises. In doing so, you'll match a need that is relevant to those in our state, our county, within the support letters, and those in attendance. In your packets, you will see that I have included the site map. It is hard to read because it is black and white, but I tried to notate the, the colors as best as I could. The two-vehicle pickup drop-off to satisfy the parking regulations, it will include two parking spaces with adequate back-out and pull-out onto the road. There will be no congestion on one hundred and first street. And the second page of your packet, it is basically stating our water plans for Five Acres. Joni explained a lot of that process. Um, we're gonna have a riser put on the septic tank to bring that up to ground level. We're gonna measure the depth of the existing well to ensure, you know, do we need to get another well dug, or is this going to meet our needs? Um, once I know that I can adequately operate the well according to the regulations for cleaning, linen washing, toiletine, et cetera, I will utilize the well. For cooking, drinking, bottles for babies, I will install coligene services for clean, accessible water, and I will put in multiple opportunities for easy access. Due to the outdoor faucet on the northeast side of the house, the outdoor play water will also have gone through the whole-house water equipment and, and, and black light, sorry, is it black light? Black light, uh, filtration system. Um, I had my septic tank pumped a week ago. Uh, Perry came out last Thursday, he said because it has sat for a while without continuous running, he wants me to use six months of use, and then he's gonna come back out and do that inspection then. Um, I, the, it's one thousand eight hundred square feet is the house. And we'll be utilizing the full three-bedroom, two-bath home, the attached breezeway, and the attached garage. We have reached out for rural water, rural water district aid is selling no new meters. There's no possible way to get on that right now. Um, and the septic and laterals, again, with Mr. Piper, he is going to come back out in six months and test it. So, I appreciate you guys taking your time today, this is something that I am passionate about, and I think that our community will greatly thrive. Thank you. Do I need to sign this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Does, does anybody have any questions for her?
I don't think I have any questions for her, but for you, where does the, cause I just don't know, is, uh, the pond, does that, once it's filled in, does it have to be fenced or anything, or is it just completely filled in and there's no need to worry on that?
Um, I, I believe the one pond that she plans to fill in is the one closest to the house, correct?
Yes, and so then, if you'll see on your map, the F that runs this line, it is either gonna be a tre- a shrub row, tree row, bush row, or a fence of some sort that will eliminate them making their way down to the second pond, which is technically only, like, a third of the pond is owned by that property, the rest is already owned by myself, we will eliminate access to that pond.
Okay.
Um, the first pond has been completely filled in and is now dirt, and will be, will be planted a hundred percent to grass.
And the answer to that, uh, more fully would be, the childcare licensing oversees the actual property and any safety concerns, um, so we don't consider that. I don't know what they'll require, but they do site visits and go out there and let them know what it is that they need to conform with.
Okay, we've also done some tree removal up here by the shop, and that is where we're gonna designate a play yard, so we're more than at least two hundred and fifty feet from any body of water.
Ken?
You're definitely needed in that part of the country, so I'm glad you're stepping up for the deal.
Thank you. A very unique opportunity.
So, if you got, if you got into a, a bind, you'd be serviced by, you think Harveyville before Auburn for, for fire or paramedic?
We're right on the line, we're the last road in Auburn Township, it would be Auburn. Township is who would be called first, but I think that once they get into that situation, they do come. We've worked, unfortunately, back in two thousand eleven, had a house fire, and we had all three, uh, fire departments there, tending to our services, so.
I hope you, I hope you're in great success, and thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any public comment in favor of? Is there anything to sign their name?
Just make sure to sign that.
Just make sure you sign your name and then say your name.
My name's Amy Johnston, uh, my home address is one one nine four two K four Highway, Maple Hill, Kansas, six six five zero seven. I am the pre-K through six, uh, building administrator for Mission Valley, and we've spent probably two years trying to figure out how to get daycare in our area, due to parents, due to staffing, just due to community, and so, um, Kristen's dedication, she has jumped through, I can't even tell you how many hoops, and she does it with a smile every time, and professionalism, so you will be making a great decision to give her this exception and help our community, thank you.
Anybody else forward?
Good evening, my name is Dustin Koontz. I've spent almost twenty-five years as the mayor of Harveyville. Additionally, my family owns and operates Harveyville Seed Company. I can tell you one constant that I've heard and seen as the mayor of Harveyville, is we try to attract new residents, new businesses to our community, is the lack of childcare. I can speak for Kristen, I've known her her whole mi- whole, whole life, she was in my baby sister's class, her character's intact, when she says she's gonna do something, she does it. Um, I'm just here to help support that process. The one thing I will speak to, and, and you'll find it in my letter, is the mayor of Harveyville, over the years I've been involved in drafting a lot of ordinances, and you always do them at the best intent at heart, but it's really hard to draft statute ordinance and be all-encompassing of every situation that might occur. And so, I'm encouraged, I guess, that there's an exception process that can occur when that unique situation falls outside of the box. And so I, I just hope that you'll take advantage of that opportunity tonight, and, and you'll act in behalf of an exception for Kristen and her daycare project. Thank you.
Anybody else forward?
I'm Stephanie M. Thern, I'm the Economic Development Director for Wobonzie County, three three five seven eight, Maple Hill, Kansas. Um, this is a childcare desert, this is very important to Mission Valley School District, the three communities that actually go to that school, plus Shawnee County. There's nothing really I can add that hasn't been said, other than Wobonzie County has her full support, and we'd appreciate the vote.
Make sure you sign your name on there. Any, last call for anybody forward? Anybody against? So the public hearing portion's closed? Does any of the commissioners have anything to say?
I would just say that she's probably gonna need more than twelve spots open, so, expansion might be something in her future as well.
Do I have any motions?
I would move that we accept the, um, proposal, the.
Yeah, I just moved to approve the exceptions.
Approve the staff recommendation.
Second.
Who's second?
Uh, Ken.
Ken.
Josh Greening?
Yes.
Ken Corbett?
Yes.
Rosa Cabasos?
Yes.
Chad Gerhardt?
Yes.
With a unanimous vote in favor, the exception is recommended for approval and will be heard, oh.
No, this one doesn't actually go to the Board ofztic Commissioners, it's actually a final decision tonight, pending any of the conditions that she has to meet with. Um, so we are gonna be continuing on with our agenda. Those of you who are at the daycare, if you'd like to leave and move out so that other people can move in, feel free, don't feel any obligation to stay, there is, I think, a TV set out in the hallway now, and it's being livestreamed for anybody who wants to step out.
Oh.
Yes, uh, yes.
So now we're doing the.
Um, so now we need to adjourn the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
So, motion by Josh.
So now we gotta do the hold.
Josh. Who's second?
Chad.
Chad, second, okay. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And anybody opposed? Same sign, okay, so it's approved, four to zero, to adjourn the Board of Zoning Appeals. Okay, so next up, you're gonna call us.
When we talk into this, they can hear us out there?
Um, it's based on, there's a TV out there, yep.
Okay, so we got one, two, three, four, five seats in here, if somebody outside wants to come in here.
And I think that Kyle went out there as well to let them know that, uh, the RISs cases are next. Okay, so opening a planning commission agenda, please.
Okay, so we're gonna call to order the planning commission meeting. Thank you for your attendance, purpose of the public hearing is to gather information from the public to help the commission formulate recommendations. In order to ensure a fair and orderly meeting where everyone can participate, the commission requests that you act respectfully to everyone in attendance and follow the public hearing procedures.
Two chairs in the front row if you need them.
Yeah, please come sit down if anybody needs to come in.
Uh, the pla- chairperson will call the public hearing item, the planning department will present the staff recommendation, commissioners may ask questions of the staff, presentation by applicant and/or representatives, commissioners may ask questions of the applicant, the chairperson will open the public hearing, the chairperson will call for public comments from persons in support of the items, followed by persons in opposition of the items. The applicant will have a chance for rebuttal comments. Chairperson will close the public hearing, the commissioners may ask questions and have a discussion, and then we will take action. Speakers must speak from the podium, state their name and address for the record, the chairperson reserves the right to establish a time limit, which will be four minutes, for all speakers to ensure that everyone can speak, the designation of the spokesperson- The designation of the spokesperson for groups sharing a common point of view is encouraged. All comments and questions will be directed to the chair from the podium and not to the applicant, staff, or audience. When the hearing is closed, additional public comments are not permitted. Roll call.
Ken Corbett?
Here.
Chad Gerhart?
Here.
Josh Greening?
Here.
Rosa Cabasus?
Here.
With four members present as a quorum.
Okay, so next is.
Minutes.
So, we have on the agenda, and we need to make a, an amendment here to take this off. The approval of the May thirteen, twenty twenty-four public hearings was on. Um, those were the wind and solar farm planning commission hearings that were held at Overland, Great Overland Station last month. Um, we were not able to get those minutes finalized because of the large capacity that the file was and getting it downloaded and converted did not happen. So, um, we will set those off for the next time we have a planning commission meeting and you can consider those at another time.
Okay.
So next up, communications from public to staff. We have four cases pending now and I will go through this step by step. Um, the first one that will, you'll be hearing is the Roberto Rice Bed and Breakfast. That one, I, we sent out the communications to public and we got one response back from a neighbor who indicated that he supported her venture. Um, no other comments were made on that one. In regards to, uh, the rodeo venue, we received a large quantity of emails on that one and I forwarded everything to you that was available as of earlier today. There were probably three or four additional emails that came in today that I will pass on at a later time. But just so you know, there were a large quantity of emails that were sent and as a part of your packet. Um, and then I know that we have a bunch of people that will be here today in regards to that, that public hearing. Um, the third one, there were no comments called in. We had a couple people call and ask questions about why we were sending the notice, but none in regards to the, uh, Robert Scott, Trevor Scott case. Um, and then the fourth one is the Robert Palmer case, which is the modification of the P, uh, RR two PB. And that one, we didn't get very many public comments ahead of time. We did get a few people that called and asked questions and we answered those and then we, we're in communication with one person in particular. But you may note that as a part of the packet that I sent you, I did send you eighty-five petitions. We also got today an additional hundred and five petitions and then we had another packet handed to me this evening. And so all of those petitions are here. I'm assuming that there's probably a couple hundred petitions. Um, if anybody wants to take a look at those, we can pass them down so you can review those and see what they are. But they all are the same petition that was emailed to you, just signed by additional people.
Opposed?
And that's it from the communications from public to staff.
Those petitions are in favor or against?
Uh, in opposition.
Okay.
Yep, they're all in opposition. And again, they are the same petitions that I emailed to you originally. They're, they just obtained additional that I had not been able to get over to you, to provide you. So that is all in regards to communications from public to staff. Next would be ex parte communications. Are there any ex parte communications by members of the commission on any of the four cases if that need to be identified?
Yes, so I would say I had communications, um, from the Shawnee Heights superintendent sharing concerns uh, from the neighboring area out by Shawnee Heights High School.
And are you gonna be able to take those considerations and set them aside for independent thought and consideration of the, uh, the projects and the approvals?
Yes.
Anyone else that had ex parte communications?
I talked to some neighbors.
And the same question to you. Are you able to, uh, set those aside for independent and, and a decision?
Yep.
On the cases? Josh, can you identify which case it was on?
For the Robert Palmer one.
Okay, and Rosa, yours was on the rodeo?
Yes.
I had a phone call on the Robert one and I forwarded him your email.
Okay.
So they would see what was going on.
Okay.
Uh, any declaration of conflict of interest by members of the commission? Ken, you're up.
Okay, next up, we will start with, um, item one on the agenda for the planning commission, which is CU twenty-four oh-two, Roberto Rice. Um, this is a conditional use permit to request and establish a bed and breakfast home on property zoned RR one residential reserve. Uh, this one's located off of Southeast Forty-first Street in Topeka Township. Um, so to start off on this one, Roberta had been operating a, an Airbnb and had found out that she needed to have a conditional use permit to do so. Um, she contacted my office and we talked about it a little bit and she agreed that she would terminate the use of the bed and breakfast for the time being. Um, after that, she did, um, hire counsel and came in and applied for the conditional use permit application. So he is her, um, app- co-applicant, or not co-applicant, but representative for the applicant for the conditional use permit. Um, we met on this one again and went over all of the regulations in regards to a bed and breakfast home and we felt like her situation really quite clearly fell within the, the requirements and the conditions for a bed and breakfast home. The applicant does in fact live in the house. She has historically and plans to, in the future, limit guests to four people, which would typically be one family. Um, it has limited impact to the neighbors and I'll show you, uh, a picture of the, the area so you can see why. There's lots of open space, especially due to the location right off of Lake Shawnee. Um, they do have kind of a separate area in her home so that she's able to, to stay a little bit away from them and have her space and they have their space. Um, it's set up and has not had any issues over the years, uh, that she did operate it and then, um, I anticipate she looks forward to being able to begin her operations again, uh, moving forward. If you refer to your staff report, um, I identify the specific requirements that are necessary for the zoning regulations. Um, it's supposed to operate as an ancillary use to the principal use, which means it's just a secondary use and she does live in their primary, it is her home. It, she'll be located in an existing single-family dwelling. Um, it operates fully within the dwelling unit and not in a accessory structure. Entrance to the guest rooms all come from within the dwelling. They do have the ability to get in and out of the house from a secondary patio area. Um, the exterior of the dwelling remains the same and it's not gonna change at all. She's not gonna have to make any changes to the home whatsoever. Uh, there are no individual guest, uh, cooking facilities for a, within a guest room, so no hot plates or microwaves or anything within a guest room. Um, it will not be used for weddings, receptions, or other parties. Uh, I don't believe she has any illuminated signs, but, uh, one would be allowed if she would wish to have that. And then any retail sales have to be clearly incidental and subordinate to the primary use of the, 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 um, home. As I said, she lives in the house full-time. She doesn't plan on any new structural development. Uh, most of the, the guests are families that are there to utilize betis, um, or attend a wedding just down the road. It's right by the sand volleyball pit, the dog park, um, the, the tennis courts and such that are right there. And right next to the walking path along Lake Shawnee, it's really just right across the street. Uh, it's, because she lives in the house, she's available for the convenience of the guests, but also has the ability to monitor what is occurring within the neighborhood and have, uh, be considerate to her neighbors. She also will have to have off-street parking. There's plenty of space within her property to do that. Um, she'll have to dedicate some additional right-of-way, but that's just a request of Public Works, uh, not because there's any concern with the existing right-of-way. Um, she did reach out to environmental health and they indicated as long as she limits the guests to four people, um, and with her living there, the septic system size should be sufficient. And, uh, I did add a requirement that she needs to comply with any requirements of the zoning regulations, uh, to follow her business plan and follow any requirements of the state bar marshal, should there be any in regards to bed and breakfast facilities. We don't dig into those details, but just tell them that they need to follow those. Um, so what you see here is her property and how close it is to Lake Shawnee. Um, you can identify there some of the parkland, the path, uh, tennis courts, the dog park. The, this is the one thousand foot, um, notification area. Uh, like I said, we didn't have one neighbor reach out and say that he wasn't gonna be able to be here, but that he did, uh, agree with her proposal and hopes that she can move forward. I have nothing else really on this one. I've already read off a majority of my recommendations. My recommendation on this would be that you, uh, recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners subject to the conditions. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Go ahead, Ken.
I'm on page two. Uh, it'd be, uh, not, item number four, where it says no commercial telephone listing. Is that for, how, is that for some other reason other than, is that for selling stuff or?
That's for the retail sales, yep.
But she can promote her.
Yep, she can promote her business, yep. So I assume she'll use Airbnb, VRBO, those types of things, yep.
Uh, anybody else have questions for Johnny? We're gonna open up the public hearing, so if the applicant would like to get up and speak.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Hutton. I'm a lawyer here in town. I represent Roberta Rice, who is standing next to me. She's the applicant this evening. Um, Ms. Tadoni did an excellent job of putting together her, uh, her report, uh, her staff reports. I'm not gonna go into too much detail, but hopefully we can, uh, answer some questions. One thing I did wanna make clear, especially for the record, if you'll note in the application that we put together, uh, attachment B to the CUP application is basically, uh, is our explanation of our, uh, basically going through the golden versus city of Overland Park, uh, factors. So that's what attachment B is and I think it suffice to say that all of the golden factors in this particular case are, they weigh in favor of the CUP being compatible with surrounding neighborhood and actually brings quite a bit of benefit to the community, um, for, uh, both my client, but then also just, it adds another, uh, another place, another nice place for people who wanna come and enjoy Shawnee County, especially in the Lake Shawnee area for them to s- to stay and, and I think you've got a lot of people in the past that've come back, you know, just because they enjoy your, your place so much. So, um, it's kind of a win-win situation. Um, as Joni mentioned, uh, there's not going to be any construction that'll be necessary. There'll be nothing that will change on the physical structure of this, this residence by virtue of the passage of the CUP. So, um, I think that probably explains why there's not a lot of neighbor, uh, involvement frankly, because it's not gonna affect them much at all, um, which, uh, i- I find in these, these zoning situations is probably a good thing. So in any event, um, we would respectfully ask that this body, uh, approve my client's, uh, application for a conditional use permit and will stand for questions at this time. Okay, thank you so much.
Would anybody like to speak for it? Anybody against? In opposition? Okay, so public hearing's closed. You guys have any thing you wanna, questions to talk about, motions, whatever?
I'm making a motion, we approve the, uh, project.
Ken has a motion to approve. You have a second?
Second.
Chad Gerhart?
Yes.
Rosa Cabasus?
Yes.
Ken Corbett?
Yes.
Josh Greening?
Yes.
With a unanimous vote in favor, the item is approved and will be considered by the Board of County Commissioners on July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, at nine AM.
Okay, so the next case that's gonna be called is the rodeo event venue, no Turriuviartes. So if anybody's out in the hall and wants to come in for this public hearing, you may.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Um, there are a few additional chairs in here if anybody wants to come and fill in. If not, we're, uh, considering item number two, which is CU twenty-four oh-four. Okay, so this one is a conditional use permit to establish a rodeo event venue on property zoned RA, um, or rural agr- rural agricultural district, um, off of Southeast Forty-fifth Street and Tecumseh Township. So this case came up to me, uh, a year or so ago. They came into my office and inquired about operating a, uh, a one-time rodeo event and wanted to get a special use permit. Uh, the problem being that with a special use permit, it really takes a lot of time, uh, just as much so as a conditional use permit. And so I went through that process with him and let him know, um, what all would happen and what would be required. And I encouraged him to start getting a consultant, looking at site plans, uh, getting his full proposal together and submitting it as a whole to do a conditional use permit instead. Um, the proposals for a periodic, family-friendly rodeo event that would feature bull riding, horse riding, live music, um, games and activities, raffles, fundraisers, food and, uh, and alcohol sales. The proposals at the rodeo events would occur only between the months of May and September with a maximum number of four per year and that they would have no more than four hundred persons attend each of those events. Uh, an event like this is allowed upon the approval of a conditional use permit, um, so long as it's determined by you as the planning commission and then the Board of County Commissioners that it's compatible with the surrounding land uses. Uh, plating of this property is not required. These types of events can be approved on a one-time or occasional basis utilizing a special event permit, which is a slightly different but similar process. However, when it's repetitive events that plan on happening multi-times a year and year after year, the recommendation is that they move forward with a conditional use permit, which is how we are at where we're at today. Um, looking specifically at the zoning report, I listed out all of the, the information from the business plan that was provided, that they plan on having vendors, staff, and participants that could start arriving at two PM on the day of the event. Public would be invited to arrive at four and then they indicate that the public would be off the premises no later than one AM on the night of the event following the, the morning following. Um, in this situation, a new entrance will have to be created off of Forty-fifth Streets. Let me actually, I'm gonna.
So I mean, it's not a rodeo, right? It's not a rodeo.
I'm gonna pull this up on the GIS so that you can see a little bit better the actual property and entrance. Okay, here it is. So it's this property here. You can see that the applicant has already done some work on constructing an arena. So that's what you see here is the arena. Um, what you can also see is that there is, um, an entrance here off of Forty-fifth. However, the applicant wishes to not include the, uh, three acres or so at the bottom side of this in case he wishes to, uh, build a house here at some point. And so the conditional use permit includes the entire parcel except for a section right here in this corner. Um, what you can also see is that there's an entrance off of Forty-fifth to this property here, which is a cemetery and it's owned by a, a different property owner. When he purchased the property, the people selling it to him indicated that they've always allowed them to use that entrance and so he had been utilizing it. We did get contacted by, uh, Tecumseh Township and asked that he, uh, terminate use of that entrance because they, they were using it for more than what the, the township and the cemetery were willing to allow them to use. And so as a part of this, because this entrance comes in off of the area that he's not including into the conditional use permit. into the conditional use permit, he would actually need to obtain a new entrance somewhere, uh, further to the east to take access onto the property. Um, they've indicated in their business plan that staff would be on-site to help guide the visitors and guests and park. Uh, they've indicated on their site plan that's included with your packet that the parking area would be over in the southeast corner of the land over here, in this area here, and all the way down. They indicate that they will check IDs and, uh, do back searches, car searches, and stuff to make sure that nothing that's prohibited wouldn't come onto the property. Uh, and for alcohol sales, they would give, uh, wristbands to anybody participating so that you know if they are twenty-one or older or not. They indicated that they would have speakers in the stage in this arena here, kind of surrounding the area. They indicated that they would point the speakers away from the majority of the neighbors, which would mean that they would need to face east and north. They've indicated that they would do some outdoor soundproofing, although they didn't, um, identify exactly what that outdoor soundproofing would be. They indicated security personnel would be available on-site, again, that searches would be done upon entry. Anyone disrupting the event would be asked to leave. They would ask for AMR emergency services to be available on standby, and they would have a pathway, um, around the event center to the back and a staging area for AMR in the back, back here. They show on their site plan that's a part of your packet, uh, light towers that would be placed throughout the property to ensure sufficient lighting for the parking lot, um, the guest area and the arena. They did not indicate, uh, you know, what those light towers would look like, which way they would point, um, how they would be protecting or protected from, uh, disturbing any of the surrounding neighbors, just that they would light up the property to ensure safety with all the property. Cleanup would occur throughout the event, um, and then extended to the, the day following. Okay, so... Um, I have a lot of concerns on this particular proposal. I pass those concerns on to applicants. You'll see them within the report that you have in front of you. There are a list of a lot of concerns, um, starting on page two and then extending into page three. Uh, there's ten items plus a list of A through V of things that I felt like were missing or not sufficient to identify how this rodeo would operate and how we would prevent it from affecting the neighbors in the area. I could go through all of them, but I think that it's, uh, sufficient that you read through them and identify that there are a lot of concerns. I feel like there's a lot of information, frankly, that make it so that you can't really seriously consider this application until we have additional information. Um, one of the concerns, obviously, is public input. When you're looking at your golden factors, if you guys remember, you have seven or eight things that you look at, uh, public input is actually not one of the specific golden factors, although it is something that you can consider when you're considering, um, a proposal. Uh, as you can see, there are a lot of people here tonight who I anticipate will want to speak, and then you had a bunch of emails that were presented to you. In regards to the suitability of the property, while an RA property may be suitable, the, the unfortunate circumstance here is that it is located very close to a neighborhood. There are a lot of people who live just east of this property, um, who have been affected by the property. There have been, uh, sorry, just west, I apologize. The applicant has hosted private events for the last couple of years while he's owned this. My understanding is that there's been complaints, there's been noise violations, there's been calls to the sheriff, music goes late into the night. We are aware that there have been weddings and other private parties that have happened there. The difference between those and the rodeo events is that the rodeo events would be open to the public, there would be advertisement, they would be inviting the general public to come to the rodeo event. The private events, anybody's allowed to have a private event. You can have a birthday party, you can have a wedding, you can have whatever on your own property. Um, so we, my department has very little control over those events that have happened to this date, and I know there's been a lot of question about, um, you know, if this rodeo is approved and happens four times a year, well, what about all those other events? Well, my answer to that is, if they're public events or they're renting it out to someone and hosting weddings just for the general public to come to or inviting, you know, having a website and saying, "Hey, sign up to have a wedding at our, our venue," that would not be allowed, but if they're having their brother's birthday party, that kind of stuff is allowed. And so if they have parties and noise and loudness, there's, there's very little that I can do out of my department to, to limit that. Now, I will point out that you can see, um, Shawnee Heights Middle School and High School are located right there. These events mostly would occur during the summer, but some of them would be during May and September when there would be football games, other events, concerts. Um, this is very close to Forty-Fifth and Shawnee Heights Road. Forty-Fifth Street is also very busy. Um, it's only a two-lane road. I have grave concern about the traffic impact that it would have on this road. I will notate that the applicant has already been told that he has to do a traffic impact analysis or a traffic study, and my understanding is that he's in the process of having that accomplished. That's a study done by, uh, special engineers who do studies on the traffic and the impact that this would have, and then any recommendations that are made in that traffic study would be required as a part of any condition of approval. Um, he also has to have a drainage report done to see how the changes to the land might affect drainage and runoff onto the property. I think that maintaining the agricultural use of the property would ensure the use of the surrounding properties. While I do believe that a rodeo event center, a cultural, um, activity, any sort of activities that could be occurring such as these, they're really exciting for Shawnee County and they're, it would be cool to have something like this happen, but I just don't think that this is the right location. Um, when the applicant originally came to me, I suggested he look for some other properties where he may find, um, that this would maybe be a little more appropriate. Um, I, I anticipated that this would happen and that there would be a lot of concerns about the, the application itself. So, um, extend any questions in regards to my presentation.
Anybody have any questions for Joni?
Question.
Go ahead, Ken.
Johnny, one of the questions, uh, one of the questions I have is, um, in agri- in agritourism, we had a pumpkin patch in Johnson County that just sold pumpkins. And once Johnson County got a hold of that, their taxes went from a couple of thousand to almost sixty thousand dollars. Johnson County's crazy and they're appealing that, but I'm, I just want whoever's doing this to kinda find out before they do the work what the taxes might be so the government don't take it before they have a good chance to play on it. So, I don't, I don't know what they've got to do here, but that, that's one case I know about in Johnson County.
Yeah, I might counter that to argue whether or not it would be considered agritourism. While historically, um, horses have been used for agricultural or cows have been used for agricultural uses, a rodeo in and of itself, by definition, I don't know would fall under agritourism. But I think that that's a question that could be defined by legislature, by state. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that, but I do, I do understand what you're saying.
My concern was, whatever it is, I just won't, I've seen this before where they build it, they'll come and then they get the tax bill, and they're no longer open. They can't get enough revenue to pay the taxes, and then I don't want them to go to all that work and let, let somebody take it from them. That's, I just don't know what's gonna happen there. I don't know.
Any other questions?
Uh, you mentioned the applicant potentially might build a house there. The applicant, is the applicant on the land next door?
So he owns the full circle of red here. Um, but what's not identified on here is that the conditional use permit doesn't include a small corner of the land. Um, if you look at your application packet, in the site plan that they provided, it shows, it's, pull it up if you look at this one.
This one here?
Yep. If you look at the pull it up one, what you can see is they didn't include in the site plan for the conditional use permit a stretch of land in the western corner.
I wonder that was for?
In this whole corner down here, they did not include this in the conditional use permit. Um, we identified it as such here because that's how we can circle around the land without making a lot of adjustments, but this little section here is where he has indicated that he would potentially build a house.
The property to the west, where that little rectangle's carved out?
That's on by somebody different. Over here.
Yeah, no, the property to the west that's got the white roof and then that rectangle...
Those are on by other people. And then this is the cemetery. This is, um, in conjunction with the cemetery.
Yeah, it's just a road, actually, is what it is.
It actually has two different owners, but it's all in conjunction with the cemetery.
Any more questions for Joni?
Johnny, what's the difference between RR one and C two? What, what, what do you do at C two, or what can they do at C two if they can't do it at RR A one?
Oh, well, I mean, C two is a commercial use. You'd have to rezone from RR, from RR two, C two, it would be considered spot zoning. Typically, we would find maintaining the current zoning with the conditional use permit would be better than rezoning to commercial. If you rezone to commercial or to C two, any use allowed under C two is an allowable use on this property, whereas in this situation, it's still RR, but the only use allowed would be for the rodeo. So my recommendation would not be to move forward with, uh, a commercial zoning in this location. We can pull up the specific zoning regulations if you wanna see some of the uses that would be allowed under C two.
So, is there anybody here could tell me, if this goes C two, how is it gonna be classified for, for, uh, would it be, with taxes, commercial?
Oh, for taxation, I don't, i- it does get classified as commercial. The use, so, when the appraiser classifies the property, it doesn't necessarily correlate with the zoning, it correlates with the use of the property. So you could have a commercial use such as a conditional use permit, and they may, depending on how they have to define it under their classifications, it may have a classification that's a little bit different and get taxed a little bit differently. Um, I work with the appraiser's office on occasion to say, they'll contact me and they'll say, "Well, this property is RR, but it's being used commercially," and I'll say, "No, that's, that's zoned residential. They shouldn't be operating a commercial business from there, so don't just change the classification. We need to contact them and say you can't run a commercial business." So if there's a conditional use permit, sometimes those are deemed to commercial uses and they may have some sort of commercial classification.
Any more questions for Joni? Okay, at this time, we're gonna open up the public hearing, so if the applicant or the representative wants to get up and talk, just be sure to write, uh, fill out your name and stuff.
Good evening. I'm Joshua Bolinsky with SBB Engineering.
You're gonna have to talk a lot louder.
Yeah, so that's not amplified, so you're gonna have to speak up and yell like I do.
Joshua Bolinsky with SBB Engineering. Everybody good? No? Excuse me. Joshua Bolinsky with SBB Engineering. Uh, and I have the applicant here, Mr. Turuviartes. I don't have much to add to the, the presentation. Joni did a great job at that. I'd like to address a few of the comments. I think the, uh, commission would be better served if we provided a written response to these questions. They're extensive, as you mentioned, uh, and the way that we would address those is a combination of providing a quasi-business plan as well as notes on the CUP that can be taken out later and referenced to, um, as the place is operated. So, for instance, we would add a note here, one of the questions is, "No overnight camping." We would provide a note possibly on the CUP that would state that. Uh, signs, uh, are required here not to park on the street or in the adjacent cemetery. We would, uh, provide the location and what the signs would refer to, uh, in the, in the response to these. So, uh, we'll provide a full re- response to all of these and any additional questions that you have and any public comments that come up tonight. We'll try to, uh, respond to any, um, off-the-cuff comments as best we can, but the majority of them we plan to respond to in writing. I think, uh, Noe, Noe would have a few words.
Uh, good evening, everybody. My name's Noe Turuviartes. I am your neighbor. Uh, as you guys may have, um, seen or driven by the property, um, I figured it'd be best for me to show my face today instead of sending Josh, uh, to handle all the questions. I consider myself a simple man, uh, and again, I wouldn't wanna do anything to the community that the community does not like. Uh, like, um, Joni mentioned earlier, there's plans for me to, you know, build a house on this property or a bit of it, and I wouldn't want to have something in the community that, you know, I wouldn't want my children to grow up around. So, um, that's why I'm here, because I wanna hear everybody's concerns and hopefully we can, you know, meet halfway and, um, you know, be able to bring this to the Shawnee County or Tecumseh community. Eventually, when I first started this plan, um, I envisioned, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Saddle Club in North Topeka, um, I envisioned something like that when I first started planning this. I don't have all the funds to, you know, like somebody to just, right off the bat, build everything, start it. Um, so eventually, it's been a process for me, and it's also been a learning process as well, so, but I do just wanna say that, you know, I'm here to do things right and hopefully work with you guys hand in hand to, you know, see this through. Um, like Joni said, I've been working on this for maybe two years now, and, um, with Josh's assistance, we wanna make sure that, you know, we're doing everything correctly from traffic plans to, uh, safety, noise concerns. I know Joni mentioned, uh, you know, that we wanted to have, uh, public events till one A.M. Obviously, I don't wanna be out there till one A.M., um, so I can make some adjustments, um, to those, some of those criterias that we provided in our plan, but again, I just wanna make sure that, you know, you guys know me and that I wanna be here to, you know, be a member of your community. Like I said, eventually, I wanna, uh, move out there and raise my kids out there in your community, so, that's all I had. Thank you.
That's all we had for right now. We'll be open for questions.
All right, we're gonna open it up for public comment of anybody for it.
Is this one in favor of?
Opposed.
Okay, we wanna start with in favor of, sorry, we'll hold on to this, but we wanna start with if anybody is in favor of it, have them go first, please.
This is in favor.
Four minute, and four-minute time limit for anybody, whether in favor of or in opposition to.
Okay, so you can be the first one against.
Oh, right.
And your time starts now.
My name is Kent Diedrich. I live at six three four three, southeast Forty-Fifth Street, across the street from the property that is requested in conditional use permit, number CU two-four dash oh-four. I'm not only here to speak on my own behalf, but for many of my neighbors. Many of them are present here tonight, many of them couldn't make it due to work and family. Uh, First East Property, as well as all connecting properties, is currently categorized as agriculture. However, within a half a mile, there are eighty-plus residential properties. I have yet to speak with anyone in support of this permit, and there are several reasons why. Start with the traffic. Ingress and gre- ingress off of Forty-Fifth Street are many times problematic currently. A two-lane street with forty-five mile an hour speed limit that carries a fairly heavy traffic load. Shawnee Heights High School and Middle School are within a half mile. Shawnee Heights High School and Middle School are within a half mile, and often have sports activities in the evenings and on weekends. During the summer, there are many RVs, motorhomes, travel trailers and boats traveling up and down the road. The submitted proposal states that, and I quote, "We'll have staff guiding people in and out of the premises to manage traffic," end quote. Question and concern is what kind of staff? Are they knowledgeable about traffic control and what authority do they have on public streets? Next, I would like to discuss security concerns. It states that there will be, and I quote again, "Six to eight security personnel at events to manage any issue that may arise." What qualifications will these security personnel have? And what authority will they have to do anything if someone is intoxicated, unruly, or out of control? It stated that there will be both vehicle and person search upon entry. Who will be responsible for these searches? And what will the search consist of? Does, does that include all glove boxes, trunks and under seats, as well as a pat-down on all people? It further states that if people go back to their vehicles at any point after entry, they will be padded down once again. If all vehicles are properly searched, there should be no reason to pat down someone again. It appears that organizers are expecting inadequate initial searches. The sound issue has been an ongoing problem for residents of this area. Although it is stated, and I quote, "That speakers and stage will be, and seating will be facing east and north, where there are no immediate neighbors, and will place speakers on lowest elevation possible to combat sound," end quote. That is unless you live east or north, which includes the Lake Jabaro area where many residents live, which were not within the thousand, um, foot notification radius, so the people there were not even notified of this. It also states that three light towers will be placed on the property. The questions that arises are, where will they be pointed, placed, powered, how will they be powered? If they're powered by gas or diesel motors, that will increase ambient noise levels in turn, meaning speaker volume will be required to be turned up. Safety issues are a great concern. It says that AMR will be on standby at event, end quote. Does that mean AMR will be hired to stand by on the property? If so, I know from past experience that this is quite a costly thing to do.
Time's up.
As long as he's speaking on behalf of a group and, um, then we don't have additional people getting up and saying the same thing.
It'll be another four, and I'll be done. Back on AMR. It's very costly to have AMR standby. I'm, I'm retired in the big fire department, I know what AMR costs per hour to have it standby. It's not cheap. The pro, the proposal also states that, quote, "A clear path will be created for ambulance and firefighter entry." Even if there is a clear path to the event, the so-called roadway is a dirt road through a pasture, which is not adequate at all for an ambulance or fire apparatus. Cleaning up at the event, up to four hundred guests, and who knows how many vendors, staff, security, contestants and livestock may be, it may be a monumental undertaking. They say the cleanup will take place throughout the event, but due to scheduled times, darkness will not allow for this to be fully cleaned up. If there's any wind overnight, my property is directly across the street. Anything that's gonna blow, is gonna blow right into my front yard if you have the north wind, and of course, we all know we don't get winds in Kansas, so. And so what the next day cleanup consists of? Say they're gonna be walking up and down the streets and ditches or through our yards, cleaning up stuff, and in the past, I've had to clean up my ditch right across the street from cans and bottles that somehow mysteriously appeared. Now, what is this? It stated that it's a family friendly rodeo event, but in reality, it appears that this is a retail commercial business attempting to start up in a rural agricultural district that abuts to a residential area. Food and alcohol sales enravels our commercial endeavors. It also states that there's a max of four events per year, with a maximum of four hundred people. First of all, how is this going to be determined when the capacity of four hundred people are met? Will there be someone counting heads at the gate, pre-registrations, or tickets sold? The max of four events a year does not seem excessive if the neighbors had not been subject to many private events that currently occur on this property. Noise has been the greatest problem, often going on up to and after 2:00 AM. I've been in my house with the doors and windows closed and had to turn the TV up in my bedroom to get to sleep, and you still hear the boom, boom, boom of the bass. And my house across the street is nearly a half mile away. At one recent private event, the sound that awoke me was a barrage of gunfire that occurred around 3:00 AM. This leads to the hours of operation. It states that "public," and I quote, "public," "most if not all," will be off premises no later than 12:30 or 1:00. This whole statement has a lot of ifs and maybes. Is it required that fifty percent plus one of the public must leave? And who will enforce making them leave? If they wish to sit around in the parking area? And about what time they should be out of, off the property? It sounds like 12:30 to 1:00 o'clock may be just a suggestion. When licensed bars have a closing time, say midnight, normally the clock is set ahead five to ten minutes so that patrons are out by that time. If public events are reflective of past private events, where not near as many people have attended, I could see no benefit passing this permit, and in fact, see many detriments to the community that include, but are not limited to, traffic, vehicle accidents, noise, decreased property values and public safety concerns. Thank you.
Just a reminder, um, everybody gets four minutes, but if someone says something that you agree with, just come up, sign your name, say who your name is, say I agree with everything he said. You don't have to necessarily repeat the same things, you can, but it just kind of moves it a little faster. Anybody else? Just sign and just state your name and your address if you would, please.
Nancy Torpleson, sixty-two twenty-one Southeast Forty-Fifth Street.
Then once she's done, the next person can go up. I would assume you agree with what he said?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah?
Uh, my name is Chilside Jackson, I live at sixty-two twenty-one Southeast Forty-fourth Street. I'm, uh, just to the west, three properties. Uh, was not planning on speaking, so I'll make it quick, though. Uh, whenever I was shopping for property, I specifically looked in this area because of the proximity to the high school and its quiet area. That's why I looked. I understand that the property owner plans to build there, but right now, he doesn't live there. He doesn't have to deal with the noise after midnight. If he's got something to do, he can go home, he can sleep in. We don't get that luxury right now. So, that's all.
Yep.
And I also agree with everything Kent said.
Where, you live in the neighborhood right there?
I do. I am, I am that house, right there.
So when there's like a football game going on, can you hear that?
I can hear it, but only whenever the touchdown's scored.
Like if you're outside, can you hear it inside at all?
I can hear the PA occasionally, but it's not bad.
How late do, how late do those normally go?
By ten o'clock.
Yeah.
By ten o'clock, they're done.
By ten o'clock, okay.
Yep. You can see the lights a little bit, but that's it.
Okay.
The big issue is the private events have been going on for the last two years, and up until this year, they have never ended before 1:00 AM. Some going until 3:30 in the morning, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah, there's already been four private events this year.
Thank you.
My name is Marshall Miller, and my address is forty-nine forty-nine Southeast Fifty-third Street, and it's just a quarter mile east of Fifty-third and Tecumseh Road. And Mike, I just have questions, how is sewer gonna be provided for this, uh, location and, and water also? Just how will that be taken care of? That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Tina Barney, my address is thirty-four twenty Southeast Pueblo Place at Tecumseh, Kansas. I live approximately three and a half miles north of the intended area and, uh, two miles west. And still, that far away, uh, my evenings have been interrupted by loud, noisy music. And I worked as a registered nurse for forty-six years, I worked for another ten years, uh, besides that, so I could be able to afford a decent home in a nice, quiet neighborhood. And I picked this nice, quiet neighborhood. There are no businesses there. We moved there because we don't want businesses around us. So I am very much opposed to this. I'm also concerned about the traffic, uh, I'm concerned about the alcohol, and where there's alcohol, there's other substances. I see this as an excuse for loud, obnoxious parties that we should not have to be forced to deal with. I, uh, request that you deny this. I've talked to a lot of people at Lake Jabaro and a lot of people surrounding, and I have not found one person that is for this. So if you do accept this, you will have about over six hundred very unhappy taxpayers that pay very high taxes for this area. So, um, I, I hope that you will not take into this selfish action of these individuals.
Hi, my name is Tim Weedmeyer and I live at sixty-two twenty-two Southeast Forty-Fifth Street, and I'm just right next to, on the corner of the housing there, right on Forty-Fifth. And, uh, I just wanted to address, it was brought up about the football games, and yeah, we can hear the loudspeaker once in a while and, but it's been a school since nineteen sixty-five. We, everybody knew that before we moved into the community, so, um, and it's kids, there's no alcohol, there's, you know, there's actually police on property all the time. I worked at Shawnee Heights for sixteen years, and so I got to know all the officers that worked there, and, you know, the lights are not a big deal, and we always cleaned up the games at nine o'clock, they were over at nine o'clock. So, you know, the lights may be on till ten o'clock when we get done cleaning up the stadium, but everybody was gone within thirty minutes, and, you know, we never had a, a lot of issues. I mean, there was a few minor incidents, but we had police right on, on duty, and so it, it hasn't been an issue for anybody that I know of. So, anyway, I disagree with everything else that's been said.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Kristen Staubalmer, this is my husband Kyle Staubalmer, we live at four-three-two-zero Southeast Heathcliff Drive in Tecumseh, and we agree with the speaker for our neighborhood.
I'm Delray Blumrick, and my husband Dennis Lemannion, we live at forty-three oh-one Southeast Heathcliff, and we're right, right across from the high school. And that does not bother us in the least bit. I do have a concern about the animals that they are bringing into this so-called rodeo. There's no pens, there's nothing for these, so if these are gonna be mogul for, uh, bull riding, that's a disaster waiting to happen.
Hi, I'm Dennis Lemannion, I'm the other half, um, forty-three zero-one Southeast Heathcliff Drive. When we moved out there, we were well aware of the high school, all of our kids went through schools there, and we understood that sitting out on your back deck in football season is an enjoyable evening. And so, um, the shock of the other side that occurred throughout the last couple of years has been quite a surprise and quite disappointing, I would say. So I'm here just to support the speakers that have already gone. Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm Meredith Burke, this is my fiance Dorian Johnson, we live within the thousand-foot radius at four-three-three-two Southeast Heathcliff. Just wanted to agree with all the points the speaker made, I wrote in a long email with concerns going into safety, traffic, noise. I know a lot of us are talking about the noise from past events, but I hope you can understand how we can extrapolate how loud these, this rodeo event with four hundred people might be, with how loud the previous events have been. Inside our house, it is truly impossible to escape the, the base, earplugs, nothing does it, you can hear it over the TV, it really just takes over the whole evening and it's been very stressful and disruptive. Anyways, just in opposition and in agreement with all the speakers, so we will sign.
Benson Tammy Foster, uh, we're at forty-two forty-eight Southeast Dyer Drive, and we agree with everything that has been said, um, opposing this event.
I do have fifty percent hearing loss in both ears, and we live at forty-two forty-eight Southeast Dyer, even with the window, with the door shut, I can still hear it, which is, um, it's hard for me to believe that.
I'm Susan Thoe, I have lived at sixty-forty Southeast Forty-third Street for, uh, the past thirty-nine years. It was a quiet neighborhood. There's still someone who is actually here this evening who has lived in this neighborhood since the early seventies, she's still there. Why are we being asked to change the way that our community was developed, and people moved here because it was nice and quiet? I've talked with Noah before, I know he has a dream, but that dream- I know he has a dream, but that dream, where does his dream start and where does it start stepping on ours? That's the question. And, yeah, I can get to sleep maybe sometimes. And then you wake up about two in the morning and it's still going, it's still going. It's kind of like that car, you know, that pulls up beside you and the, on the street when at an intersection and it's just, well, this car goes on. This music does not stop. Okay? Thank you.
My name's Jackie Bagwell and I live at thirty-six forty-one Southeast Stanley Road, which is east and a little north, about a mile. So, if the speakers haven't already been facing east, I guess we'll get even more of an earful of the noise. But I do agree with everything else that was said. I would like to add too, as far as the animals. I don't know what kind of governing there is as far as the treatment and care of these animals while they're there. Someone already mentioned the containing of these large animals on that small property. As well as four hundred people is quite a few people on that parcel of land when you talk about people roaming around and drinking and needing to go to the bathroom. We all know where that will be happening when there's a line. So, anyway, like I said, I agree with everything else as well. Thank you.
My name's Angela Long and we just moved at the end of last year. We knew about the school. We didn't know about this, so.
What's your address?
Sixty-one forty-two.
Can we please have people in the audience not talk? It's hard to hear already. We've heard the horror stories about the private events and the guns and the drinking and the car accidents. I would just beg you guys to say no to this. I applaud that he has a dream, but this is not the right property for that dream. He doesn't live there yet. He doesn't know what we're going to have to be dealing with. I agree with everything else that's been said by everyone else.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie Gritman. I live at sixty-two twenty-two Southeast Forty-fourth. The area is just south or east of where we live. Already, our concern is the noise. I agree with a lot of what's been said. You can turn your fan up, your TV up, but you still get the thump, thump, thump going on. It is hard to go to sleep. I do have concern of people wandering away from the area and coming over, we're right by the tree row, and just things starting to happen. I don't like that feeling of knowing that someone could be messing around right there in our backyard area. And I agree with everything else that has been said.
Where did you say you lived at again?
We're together, sixty-two twenty-two Southeast Forty-fourth.
Right there.
My name's Gary Ficklin. I live at sixty-one twenty-nine Southeast Forty-fourth Street. The only thing, I agree with what's been said. The only thing I would add is the owner has stated that he wishes to be a good neighbor. Yet, in spite of all the previous complaints, the noise continued after, after the, the complaints were made, so.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak, being opposed? You gotta go up there. Oh, you've already been up here once, right?
I have. At the point of information, I just wondered why there, we can't hear everybody tonight? Only person I could hear is the person in black.
This is not microphoned.
This is not microphoned?
No, it's for recording and for being on the TV out there.
Okay, thank you.
We don't, the county doesn't have enough money to have a broadcast.
We're working on amplification. I just, I verbally amplify every thing as well.
Sadly, you can actually hear us better if you're in the other room because it's on a speaker.
I just want to say, as we visited with all of our neighbors, we also asked for their concerns and we also asked for their signatures, which you are receiving here. We have a collection of them. This is something that I can leave with the committee as well.
Make sure you state your name also. Did you already give your name?
Dennis Lemannion, yes.
You just give it to.
Want it up there?
Yeah. Last call for anybody opposed. Okay, if the applicant wants to do a rebuttal thing, they can. If they don't, it's up to them. Just remember, you gotta address us, not the people. I mean, you can, you can answer their concerns, but, yeah.
On the technical side, I don't believe I have anything to add. A lot of the comments were in line with the comments that were provided in the packet. So, we are still willing to provide a written response to all those questions with additional information from what we heard here tonight. I believe the main issue was the lateness and the sound level. I believe to move forward, we would have to address that quite closely. So, we would do that in the written response. I'm not sure what form that would take as far as a decibel level or a lateness or something like that. We'll have to infer and get you something that can be reviewed and decided upon in a, in a technical manner versus just a personal type of opinion. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Like Josh said, you know, we hear the concerns with, from the community. You know, we want to make sure we're addressing everything that we heard today. I mean, overall, I, I understand, you know, the concern as well. And like I mentioned before, we, we would like the opportunity to at least, you know, provide the additional information from what we heard today from the public as well as, you know, maybe have an opportunity as well to make some adjustments to our current business plan. That way, I guess we have a fair opportunity to be heard, that's all.
Go ahead, you've got a question for you guys?
I have a question. I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
So, how long have you been doing your private parties?
So, I bought the property about two years ago.
And in, in those two years, can you kind of tell me roughly how many times that they've had the sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff facility?
Uh-huh. I can be honest with you. I've had the sheriff out there twice. And one was when I got married. And, you know, that, that event was over by ten-thirty, eleven. And that was, that's, those are the two only times that I've heard of anything come across.
And just look, just for me looking at what you've drew, drawn here, whatever. I don't see where you have the parking for four hundred and where you have your seating for four hundred. I don't see that really laid out in your drawing. I see where everybody's going.
There is a drawing that show preliminary areas of seating. Obviously, like I mentioned before, there's, it's still, you know, work in process. But before we proceeded with anything, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we were hearing the concerns from the, from the public and the community. Joni, I'm not sure if you have the drawing that Josh had.
Um, let me get back in. Every time, I'm not technologically well here to get straight back to the slide that I'm on, so give me a second. And I can't see far enough to see any new buttons. Nope, I don't have that one. Sorry. I don't know why we don't have that one, but that's our mistake. Do you, uh, would you like a copy of it up there so you can point it out? I have one here.
Um, it's, Josh has that one. Like, show, um, basically, we have, like you mentioned, it's preliminary drawings of where we would establish parking lots, roads. I know there's a concern with, you know, AMR being out there as far as, you know, having the, the road for them to easily get access. That's all identified on this business plan as well. We have consulted with, you know, fire departments, AMR, as far as what they would expect to see. And that, you know, falls within this drawing as far as, you know, some of their criteria.
Is the proposed parking area a, a hard surface of some kind, grass parking?
It is currently just vegetation, grass at the moment. We don't intend to change it. We'd like our farm ground out there. We hay it every year, so, like I mentioned, the, the, the events would only be maybe three or four per year. So, it's not going to be the definite use of that property.
Out of curiosity, have you gone to the North Topeka Saddle Club?
I have.
And how many, um, how many attendees do they have at their event? Is that similar to what you are anticipating?
So, I haven't been there recently, but several years ago, I'd say several, couple of years ago, I have, I was there, you know, when I first started with the idea, trying to understand the process that they had. It's fairly similar to what, you know, I want to do. I'm not sure exactly of the count, but based off, you know, my visual examination, it's basically, you know, the same operation that they would have, same amount of guests. And I've heard some concerns about, you know, the animals with mobile pins and whatnot. But as you guys saw, there's a picture of an arena, if you may call it that. But everything is secure, welded, in-ground. I mean, there's, you know, we built it with, you know, safety in mind as well.
Any more questions for the applicant? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing. Commissioners, you have anything you want to say?
One more comment. I'm not sure if, um, who was it, who this was shared with, but was it also shared with the community?
No, that, so the community didn't get any of the staff report information, but everyone on the planning commission had the full staff report and drawings and stuff. So, no, that was not shared with the community.
Like I mentioned, if, you know, Josh, he's more the technical guy. If, if we're allowed to, you know, provide written answers and provide adequate technical information, we'd like to at least have the opportunity to share this on the screen at a later time.
I'm gonna, no, I'm gonna change that. We did send that to anybody within the thousand foot. They did get a copy of the site.
Okay.
Yep. But if they were outside of the thousand feet where we're not required to send notice by statute, then none of those people would have had the specifics.
Thank you.
I've got something to say, but you guys, anybody else, that's not first. So, I'm gonna try to sum this up. The fun part about our job, we don't get paid, so it's not really a job, right? Is we try to think what the community wants. We're kind of a represent, representation of the community. And kind of the, the funny part about this situation that I always find is typically, there's a lot of people that don't want the government messing with their situation, right? They don't want the government to tell them what they can and can't do. But, yeah, here we are, people asking the county government to tell somebody what they can or can't do with their property. And so, it's totally situational, you know? I'm in a unique situation because I actually live two thousand feet from the North Topeka Saddle Club. So, I deal with everything you guys are talking about, the loud music, the speakers. We had a rodeo last year. I was sitting in my house and you could hear the music all night long. I think it went till about one o'clock. Main difference between the North Topeka Saddle Club and this situation is they have their four or five events and that's it, right? So, there's four or five nights that I have to deal with it, but other than that, it's a vacant lot. Just for reference, it sits on, we looked it up, it sits on thirteen acres. They don't even have a parking lot. They probably have, they have that big, whatever the radio station is. They have their big rodeo there. Ninety-eight point nine or whatever, country, whatever country station it is. They probably have around three to four hundred people there. How they get around parking is, is all the neighbors in the area that have a field. They actually rent the field out, people park in the field. They have no, hardly no gravel whatsoever. This one's a little different. You gotta, I, I look at, you, yes, you have a residential area there. The other fun part with our job is, okay, obviously, nobody wants to live next to it, but where else do you put them? You can't go much, I mean, how much farther west or east is the county line? How much farther south is the county line? North Topeka Saddle Club, it's almost in the very northeast corner of Shawnee County. I really do feel that there are a lot of concerns, the staff has a lot of concerns. I don't really feel like at this time, we can approve it. I think there's a lot of answers that need to be addressed, a lot of concerns that need to be addressed. And even then, it still might not be needing to be approved. There's just a lot of one, a lot of unknowns. I feel like it's kind of an incomplete proposal. And that's just kind of where I'm at.
I kind of, kind of follow up with him. I think everybody in this town or this county would like to have a dream. And I think they've heard the concerns. I think they come back and if they can make the, everything work, it's great. But if, right now, there is just too much for me about public, bathrooms, the water, the sanitation and, I mean, either you're a business or you're not. And my concern is if, if you get it to where you want it, you may not. And my concern is if, if you get it to where you want it, you may not be able to. The tax man may get you, you know what I'm saying? Because once you get from residential to commercial, they double. That just double your taxes. And I don't want you, I want you to know what you're getting into before you get there, so I would just, I agree with what he's saying, but maybe this is a good step forward and maybe it needs a little more, uh, a little more shine on it because it's, it's too rough for me to swallow the night.
I think that, kind of follow up Ken said and what I said too, is I don't think we're anywhere close to where it should be approved tonight. And I really feel like towards the, the applicant, I think you have to make a decision. Is this going to be a public situation where I'm doing four a year? Or is this going to be, I'm gonna do four a year, I'm gonna do all these private things and continue to piss all the neighbors off? To be, to be blunt. And if you, because I, I think as, and I'm, I'm not trying to speak for you guys, you know, but if he keeps it private, he can have a party every single Saturday, right? Every Saturday you're dealing with it. There's no, there's no nor, noise ordinance in Shawnee County. So, you're, you're stuck with it. But if he says, look, I'm gonna make this, we're gonna do four a year, that's it. Maybe that's, but that's something that he's got to decide. I can't decide that for him. None of us can decide that for him. It's like, so, that's, I don't want to ramble on, so I think I'm pretty much done, but. So I think at the very least, I mean, I think we're looking at either denial or we find that we need additional information to determine whether or not the request satisfies, satisfies it. And I think that would be part of his proposal of whether or not he wants to say, look, I'm no longer gonna do the, the, the private stuff. This is gonna be a business. This is what I'm gonna do. And then maybe, you guys might come back and say, you know what, we still hate the idea, we don't want the idea, but maybe that would be a, a common ground thing, so.
There may be more enforcement for the neighbors if he had a conditional use permit and was limited to four per year, you know, like Josh said, right now, he calls them private and it's Saturday after Saturday after Saturday. With a conditional use permit, there's a laundry list of restrictions, uh, you know, and it's going to.
So, so something a lot of people, and I tell people all the time, I've told some people about other things. So with a conditional use permit, I always tell people, go into the meeting saying, look, I don't want this, but if it gets approved, I want to see this, 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 and this, right? You can, we can put conditions on conditional use. So if it is conditional use, he's doing his four, maybe comes back and says, I'm gonna do five a year. Well, if he says that's five a year versus having a party every Friday, you know what I mean? But we can put conditions on conditional use. We cannot do anything to the private stuff, so.
I, um, you know, I, I live out in Shawnee Heights. I'm at the football games every Friday. And I, I love the area. I just want to commend the, um, the gentleman who came and has this proposal. It's hard to sit in an audience and people say things and, you know, get up and still tell everyone what your dream is. And so I commend you for coming this evening and being willing to speak and listen to everyone's concerns, because these are the people that you live next to. They're the people that, you know, your children are gonna go try to sell a, a car to or a fundraiser to and, and you want to be a good neighbor. Everybody wants to be a good neighbor. And so, um, I think it takes a lot of courage to come out here and listen to everybody's concerns and complaints and, uh, remain reasonable and respectful and selfless to take all of those in. This isn't my first planning commission. It's not my first rodeo. Um, no pun intended. But, um, but I have sat on a planning commission where, you know, there have been some major corporate people that sat there for three hours, four hours, listening to neighbors complain, and I would not have known who they were until they stood up at the end and decided to reveal who they are. So, um, and that takes a lot of, of courage, and so I want to thank you for showing up and, and being willing to listen to your neighbors' concerns and complaints and, and being willing to go back and address those, so, um, so I, I, I think that's very bold. And, um, I, myself am not ready to say, yes, this is something we should move forward with. I would make the motion that we ask for additional information to be provided. Oh, good, there we go, thank you. That the, that additional information is needed to determine whether the request satisfies the golden factors and recommends continuing consideration of this matter until July eighth of twenty twenty-four. That would be the motion that I would make at this time.
Uh, sorry, I'd, I'd say let's push it to like August.
Okay.
Just to give it a little more time.
I'm fine with that.
The August meeting is...
Or maybe not. She'll tell us.
I don't know, I'm going by.
The August meeting is August twelfth. So the option is July eight, or the next meeting after that is August twelfth, which would then put it in front of the BCC, whether for approval or for denial on September twelfth.
I'm fine with August twelfth.
Go ahead, Ken.
I would, I would suggest to the party that wants to be a good neighbor, I would suggest that he sit down with his insurance agent and tell them what you want to do. He's gonna tell you your premium is for twelve months, and you're gonna have to find a way with four events to pay your bills. There's a, there's a lot going on here. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of in it, so I know what I'm saying. You might want to curtail your activities to what you can afford and the insurance that you can pay for to get started. I talked to like Gary's Berry. He started out pretty small. He's got a pretty good operation now. And the county up there worked with him to get it, let him kind of grow and get into it, but I just think you need to kind of either have a reality check or get with your neighbors and check with your, your box to make sure your, your operation can cash flow and, and make it work. And I, whenever this works out, I kind of agree with what you said, but it would say, you just have to get a, a good base plan to see where you're at. I don't see that in this operation.
I would second the motion.
Can we actually first, before you do that? Um, so you made the motion to hear it on July eighth. Are you willing to amend your motion?
I will amend my motion.
Publicly amend your motion?
I would publicly amend my motion to August twelfth of twenty-four.
I would second her amended motion.
Chad, Chad Gerhardt?
Yes.
Yes.
Ken Corbett?
Yeah, well, yes, I'll give him a chance.
Josh Greeney?
Yes.
With a unanimous vote, the item will be deferred until August twelfth.
Um, just for everybody's attention here, we do not republish notice. We don't send out new notice. The meeting will be held back here on August twelfth at six P M. It's a Monday night. We always do our meetings on the second Monday of the month, so August twelfth in this building, in this room, at six P M.
Do we, do we think that we need to have a bigger place for the next one?
Oh, if we have a bigger place and we change things, then we would have to republish and send out notice or at least.
Okay.
The hope will be that we will be able to hold it all here. Anytime, you can always call us and ask for information. We also will publish it on our website. And if we do modify anything, we would send out a media release to notify.
I think, I think if we didn't have five things, I think it'd be okay.
Okay.
But we have five. There's people here for the next couple.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think we'll anticipate it being here.
Okay, so.
Can I make a motion that we take a five minute?
That's what I was getting at.
Oh, thank you.
So, all right, so we're done with that. When we come back, we're doing, what's the next one?
The next case will be Robert, uh, and Trevor Scott.
Robert, Trevor Scott next, and then we'll do the Palmer one, but let's take a five minute break, because I gotta go to bed.
Yes, I do too.
Okay, we're gonna get started. So the next item up is the Trevor J. Scott and Robert Scott.
Okay, so what we have here is item number three. It's Z seventy-seven twenty-eight. To amend zoning district classification from C two to RR. This will enable one of the applicants to build a new residential dwelling. It's located one half mile south of Southeast sixty-ninth and Berryton Road in Williamsport Township. In this situation, what we have is back in the seventies, as you can see, because the original zoning case was back from seventy-seven. Back in the seventies, this area was wholly RA. At some point in time, well, I guess before that, so it was zoned RA. The applicant at the time requested to rezone it to C one to open up an antique and furniture refinishing shop. And that was approved in nineteen seventy-seven. The location is near what I would call Berryton Town Center. If you've ever been to Berryton, there is a little town center there, although it's not an incorporated town. There are several parcels in the area, not right next to each other, but several within the area that are zoned commercially. So it's not unusual to see a little bit of commercial activity in that area. So after nineteen seventy-seven, the county at some point rezoned everything in the area from RA to RR. So currently, everything else surrounding this area is zoned RR. The parcel itself was originally zoned C one, but at some point, that was converted to C two. I assume that it was probably done at a similar time when we amended regulations at some point and changed zoning from one thing to another. But I cannot clarify that specifically at this time. The antique and furniture refinishing store has not been in operation for many years. New owners own the property. The current owner of seven-two-two-one is Robert Scott, and he is here tonight. He recently transferred ownership of three acres of the parcel to his father Trevor Scott. And Trevor intends to build a residence on this parcel. Typically, this would not be an issue. If you take out three acres, as long as you have three acres and two hundred feet of frontage, you can put your house. But when you come in and I see that it's zoned C two, we do have problems with that because you cannot have single-family residents within a C two zoning. So we asked him to go ahead and do the C two, or the modification to get it back to RR. The, the commercial zoning actually falls over both of the acres and so, or both of the parcels. And so both of them are applicants because it's going to affect both of the parcels. Neighborhood is mixed use, mostly agricultural and some residential. Forbes Field is to the west, as I mentioned, Berryton to just a little bit to the north. Also in the area is land and trail, a couple of churches, the Berryton Post Office and Berryton Elementary School. I have no concerns with this action. If you can see here, the, I'm gonna stand up to mark what we're looking at. The large parcel here, marked with seven-two-two-one, that is owned by Robert Scott. And then the smaller red zone here is now owned by Trevor Scott. We marked this in green because this is the area that's actually zoned commercial. And that's why we're including both of their parcels in the rezoning. But all that this deals with is this section right here that's currently zoned C two. And then Trevor Scott will then be able to come in and build a house here. The, he's already done a lot of land clearing. If you drive past the area now, there's significantly less trees in that area. Land and Trail, Forbes Field off there, Berryton United Methodist Church, the school and such are in that area. Neighbors within a thousand feet were all notified. We did have a couple of phone calls, but it was mostly from people who were confused about why they were getting notice of an action. Nobody had any comments about the specifics of the case. My recommendation is that we approve with no conditions. It would be a downzone. It's completely logical to downzone this back to RR so that it matches with the remainder of the area. It will allow him to build a residential home, clear out some trees, make good use of the, the space of the land that's there. And I have no further comments.
Okay, does the applicant have anything they want to say?
No, sir.
Anybody wanna speak for it? Does anybody wanna speak against it? That closes the public hearing. Commissioners wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to reapprove the project.
I second.
Josh Greening?
Yes.
Ken Corbett?
Yes.
Rosa Capasus?
Yes.
Chad Gerhardt?
Yes.
With the unanimous vote in favor, the item is approved. And will be considered by the County Commission on July eleventh.
So that's that. Yeah, you guys are free to go if you'd like, or if you'd like to stay and listen, you're free to stay as well. Okay, so final item for tonight is item number four, which is Z twenty-four oh-two, Robert C. Palmer. If there's anybody out in the hall or in the audience who wants to come in, we do have a few chairs. If not, you can continue to listen to it on the live stream. And as we take public comment here shortly, we can move people in for the public comment. Because it is suitable to stay out there. We will make sure that you have the chance to come in and speak. Okay, so this is a request to amend the zoning district classification from RR to PUD. PUD is a planned unit development, and with a planned unit development, we then have to have what we call, or what I call, an underlying zone. PUD itself doesn't exist without an underlying zoning as a part of that. In this situation, we're looking at M one, which is two-family dwelling district.
We got three chairs in the front row. Somebody wants to come sit down?
Couple in the second.
Okay, so the purpose of this project is that the proposed development would include fifteen duplexes. So a total of thirty units that is gonna fall within this PUD. A PUD does have private streets. So the streets that are created within a PUD are not dedicated to the public for the public right-of-way. It is a private street that's maintained by the developer. It would also have an onsite sanitary su-, uh, sanitary lagoon. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about both of those options as we go through the report. This does fall a thousand feet north of the intersection of Northwest Rochester Road and Northwest Page Lane in Soldier Township. Okay, so specifically from my staff report, what I wanna identify is what is a PUD? It is a form of development characterized by a unified site design. And so special to a PUD is what we call a master plan. So what we have in front of us today is a master plan that dictates where houses get built, where stormwater drainage need to go, where roads need to go, where all of this situation is laid out. That master plan is what has to be followed by the developer if it is approved. A master plan can show housing, clusters of buildings, it can provide for common open space. You can also, within a PUD, have mixed types of buildings and mixed land uses. So it's not uncommon within a PUD that you may have O and I and commercial and maybe some M one zoning. So there are some PUDs throughout Shawnee County that have mixed uses, and that's the design of a PUD. We established in Shawnee County a PUD zoning group to allow greater flexibility, more creative and innovative and imaginative design for development of areas that are typically not so easily designed or may not fall, may not be allowed because of strict application of regulations. And what that means is if I would have come to you and just rezoned this from RR to M one, I would have had no control over what was actually going on to the parcel. With the PUD, it allows me as the, the county planning department to make sure that there's a master plan, that they're following the master plan. If they wanna make modifications to the design, then they either have to come to me for a minor amendment. And those are very minor site plan adjustments, or language. If there's clerical issues, we can do some minor amendments. But a major amendment has to submit a new application, and they have to come back in front of the planning commission and then the Board of County Commissioners for approval. It allows us to adapt uses to meet the conditions of the site and then the area. It can provide for any mixed use or combination of uses. It may be subject to limitations, provisions, or conditions, and those conditions and provisions can be set out specifically within the master plan. They are at the same time going through a plat process through the city of Topeka. This parcel falls within the three-mile radius of the city of Topeka, so it falls under their jurisdiction for subdividing and new development. What that means is they are plating a portion of the project. So the city of Topeka also has a rule within the three-mile radius. We call it the eighty-twenty rule. And the reason of that is because what you see in red here is the area that they intend to develop with the PUD. And this is where the houses will be. This is stormwater drainage down here. It is, it's appropriated time for stormwater drainage to fall on another property. The lagoon would be somewhere in the general area. Why this is dictated in red and why this portion is being platted, this is twenty percent of the total acreage that Mr. Palmer owns. He actually owns all of this. At some point, these parcels were divided up, and then he purchased them within recent years. So he owns this parcel, this one, this one, and then this continuation of the same. But the city limits him to only develop twenty percent. The remaining eighty percent has to be maintained as a single parcel by which he could only put one home on that other acreage. So I think that the developable area that they're putting the PUD duplexes is seven acres, and then the remainder of it is the remainder of the eighty percent. The development will include three, uh, each of the units would have three bedrooms, three, uh, two bathrooms. As I said, they'll have an onsite lagoon. Due to the total number of bedrooms and the estimated gallons of water used per month, it's estimated. The lagoon cannot be permitted through Shawnee County, our local environmental health department. It actually has to go through the state's Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Now, some people have questioned, and I have known that there's been a lot of comments about why are we using a lagoon versus a sanitary sewer? And the answer to that is, it, it, there's a couple of reasons. The first being, there's not enough room to put a sanitary sewer on this property with the duplexes that could support the duplexes that are in play. Sanitary sewer has to be on the same property as the development itself. So we cannot put the sanitary, or we can, you cannot put the septic system, if a septic system were to be allowed, on the remainder of the property. It all has to fall on this seven acres. So a lagoon in part is more condensed, it takes up less space. But secondary to that is that fifteen duplexes with thirty units is a lot of action on a septic system, and it's really more than what would be recommended. So the lagoon was recommended by our environmental health as a better fit for the type of usage and the, this kind of development. I will point out in just a few minutes that there is a similar development on Northwest Topeka Boulevard that does have a septic system. However, that septic system is highly triggered by the number of units that are there already. We've heard rumors that there's the potential that it could fail or it doesn't work well. What we would want in a new development like this is that we get it set up with a system that is really useful for the development that's being requested. Development would occur in phases. The first phase would include a, a portion of the private streets, four to six duplex homes, and the waste stabilization pond and utilities, the stormwater detention ponds. The second phase would include extending the street and constructing some additional duplex homes. And then finally, phase three would include completing the street and constructing the, the remainder of the homes. Character of the neighborhood, so as you know, with rezoning cases, we're looking at Golden. So in my staff report, I went through all of the various Golden factors, including character of the neighborhood. As you know, and as you can see, there's a lot of agricultural land in the area. But across the street, you also have larger parcels with homes. If you can see around, I'm gonna actually pull up my zoning map here as we were speaking. There's actually a lot of smaller parcels, and there are some subdivisions not that far away. There is a high school, there's a middle school, there are fields where sports are played. Okay, so here's Northwest Rochester Road right here. The development location would be right in this area where my mouse is. As you can see, there is the middle school over here, and I would notate that there are three large lagoons there. There's also a high school here, track, there's two to three lagoons over here, baseball fields. The other development that I was pointing out that's nearby is right here. It's called Northern Sky. This one was redeveloped. It had been an auto salvage yard. This one actually happened, I believe, back in two thousand and seven. At that time, the city rules were not the same. They didn't have the eighty-twenty rule. And I, I did have a question about why this one was not developed at the eighty-twenty and why the one that we're looking at is. And the reason is, is this was developed prior to the city's creation or enforcement of the eighty-twenty rule. So you have these duplexes with the private streets. The entire septic system takes up this entire back portion of the parcel. Almost more space is taken up by septic than by the homes themselves. Okay, so here we are up here at the properties right here. And I wanted to point out that you've got a lot of subdivision up in here. And while the properties right across the street are larger, you also have subdivision here, you have subdivision here. And what a lot of people may not realize when they're looking out at the agland that's undeveloped is you all, you have a bunch of undeveloped subdivisions right here. If you click on our plat map, I can show you that the development in this area is proposed and has the potential to develop at a, a much higher density than it currently does, than it currently shows. This is an existing subdivision plat in this area whereby each of these properties could be developed. So while some of the, the statements in regards to ag land and the beautiful open space are true and very much accurate, the, the development of this area is not unusual based on the location of where this falls in the county and off of Rochester Road. And I tell you all this not because I'm trying to make a point about anything. I tell you this because these are all of the things that I take into consideration when I'm writing my staff report, when I'm giving you a recommendation. They're all the things that I have to consider when I'm weighing the evidence, when I'm looking at all of the various Golden factors. They're all part of the decision that, that is made. Northwest, Northwest Rochester Road is an urban major collector street. When I reached out to Public Works to find out what their input would be, they are asking that the applicant would dedicate some controlled access along the front of it. They would be allowed to have up to three entrances onto the property, although the PUD is actually only asking for two. They're asking for some additional right-of-way. I anticipate that Rochester Road will continue to be maintained. It's currently maintained by Shawnee County. Portions of Rochester Road may at some point in the future be expanded, and so they do ask for additional right-of-way to be dedicated as a part of any conveyance. That would happen through the plat process as well. So the, the dedication of that right-of-way would be notated on the plat and potentially on the master plan for the PUD, but more so on the plat. and potentially on the master plan for the PUD, but more so on the plat. They have already submitted a drainage report for the development, and it will have to be resubmitted and then reviewed and approved by Public Works and the engineers prior to development. There is a drought well located on the southeast corner of the property, and we've asked that that be preserved, and that there be an easement dedicated to make sure that that can be preserved. The wastewater lagoon would need to be permitted by KDHE, and that would be required prior to getting any building permits. They would have to do regular monitoring and cleanouts, and any of that would be in conjunction with the state and any requirements that they may have on the property as it would be monitored through them. There is a requirement for vegetation, landscaping, and screening to help not only screen the lagoon, but to beautify the property and provide screening from neighboring properties and to make this a part of the community, so that there's vegetation on the property and with trees and bushes and such.
Can you guys please not talk back there? Because it's hard for everybody to hear, because this isn't amplified, so.
All other required utilities are available, would be on roll water. No issues with electrical, and of course, the lagoon would be the wastewater. Housing at this point for Shawnee County is crucial. I believe that this helps move us forward with the housing needs that we have. It allows housing that can all be maintained in an area close to schools, close to shopping. Just down Rochester Road, you have Walmart, you have a Dylan's, you have access to Highway twenty-four. I think it's really, in the grand scheme of things, is a good location. While it may not be desirable to all the neighbors who live there right now, at some point, I would hope that this would be part of the community. So based on this, my recommendation would be for approval with the conditions that's set forth. Let me get back to my PowerPoint so you can see those. And I will point out that this zoning of M1, for residential purposes, it allows a single-family residence, or it allows a two-family dwelling, so a duplex. It doesn't allow multiplexes, it doesn't allow apartments. It really is limited, you know, with other uses like agricultural and other things that can be done within an M1. But M1 just for housing purposes allows a single-family residence or the two-family duplex style. I included this picture, which I've already shown you on the GIS map to show. They have to maintain enough room for access and part of the plat process. So, the plat of this, if you look at the other site plan that's part of that, this is actually being platted as Lot One and Lot Two, so the remainder of it will be.
Well, I see that, but.
Lot One and Lot Two, and at some point through there, there would have to be an entrance permit to access the remainder of it.
Because there's a huge pond, though, taking up that whole area, so how would you access to the pond?
That is being worked out as a part of the plat process, where that entrance would be and how it would get through past that space.
Because if that's supposed to be stormwater drainage, you couldn't put a.
Well, you're looking at it a little different. So the stormwater drainage would all, the ponds that are there now are where the stormwater drainage.
Yeah, but that's what these things are too, though.
And that falls here. So this is where the houses are, this is where the stormwater stuff is, and the lagoon, all within this area here. The housing is all gonna be on the northern part of that property.
So that's, okay.
Yep.
Where is this drought well?
They said, I'm not exactly sure. This came from the county engineer, but they had indicated on the southeast corner of the property. I'm assuming that means somewhere down in here.
That little pond, probably.
Does that serve a purpose for the county anymore?
Please, please, please. That's, no, 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 sorry, we're not here for. Okay, sir, we're not, we're not at public comment yet, please. So it was notated by the county engineer, and the county engineer asked that an easement be made a part of it. Frankly, if it falls outside of the conditional use permit area, then it wouldn't be, or not the conditional use permit, the PUD area, it wouldn't be a part of the PUD. It would actually be more appropriate for those comments to be made to the plat. And I did refer on any comments that were made to me in regards to this rezoning case to the city of Topeka, so that they could notate those and use those in regards to their plat process. And a plat would be required for any development to happen and for the rezoning to be finalized and take place. So any of these conditions and requirements have to happen for the actual development and the rezoning to be finalized.
I have a couple of questions. On the duplexes, do you have any idea what the values of these properties will be?
I don't. The applicant is here, and he can speak to that when he gets up to speak, and maybe he has some input on that.
I'll just save my questions.
Do you, the proposed size of this lagoon, have any idea what that compares to the ones at the middle school?
I don't think we know enough about that yet, and again, I'll defer that question to the applicant and his representative or the representative. I think that as a part of the process with KDHE, we'll determine the size and the exact location of the lagoon. A lot of that, some of this is the chicken and the egg, what comes first. We have to, you know, do the rezoning, we have to do the plating, we have to get the permits. But you don't want to get permits for something that you can't build. And so, some of it will be notated, but isn't exact and perfect just yet because we don't quite know.
Same thing, I mean, I guess follow-up question on the lagoon. What about overflow of that lagoon?
I would refer those questions to the applicant.
Under Golden Rule, not familiar with this, but is there any significance for this? Will have any value, one way or the other, to the other residential homes around it? Does it affect the value of homes that are there now?
I think that you can consider the impact to the general welfare and well-being and the overall. You're supposed to look at the general overwhelming impact to the community. And so putting housing in an area could do two different things, depending on the maintenance of it and the type of housing it is. It could really expand and make this a better neighborhood. I'm sure that there are situations where it could downgrade, but I don't think that you could say that at this level to know whether it improves or decreases housing values.
Maybe this will come up when the applicant comes up to talk. Has there been any, or is there a need for a traffic study on Rochester for this?
It was not requested, and I know that the Public Works Director is very specific about giving comment on whether or not a traffic study is needed. In any, in all situations, if it's needed, he would request that, and it would be a requirement by me. And it was not asked for, so I don't believe that there's any concern with the additional traffic.
Also with the locations of the entrances, I mean, the same, they've seen where those entrances will potentially be and are fine with sight distance coming down the hill. All of that is fine.
Correct, and prior to any actual development, when the buildings would be installed and the road would be put in, they have to come back for entrance permits to the county and request those entrance permits, and so they allow them to notate that. On the plat, it would notate specific locations where the entrances and the access control gaps would be. And then, again, anytime prior to them coming in for a building permit for a house, from my office, we double-check entrances, we double-check that all of the services are permitted and ready to be installed and moving forward.
One more question. Are these for rentals or for individuals just to buy? Do you know that?
I don't know the answer to that, that can be answered by the applicant as well.
Could, you know, not that we're in the decision-making process yet, but could more of these questions, similar to the case we had earlier, you know, some of these questions about this lagoon and the runoff and the size and everything that needs addressed by the KDHE, could that come before us? Before we?
Before you make a decision?
Right.
So, yes and no. As I mentioned in regards to the chicken and the egg, the question, and you know, I've worked with the representative for the applicant on this, it's kind of hard to know which you move forward with first. So, at the same time, they went to the city of Topeka to request a plat, and the city and the county worked together. We've had meetings with the city and the county to try and lay it out, figure out how it's all gonna lay out in the actuality of the parcels. So they moved forward with the plat at the same time as the rezoning, but you don't really want either one of those to happen without the other. So you don't want it to be platted, well, not necessarily. You don't necessarily want it to be platted unless you know that the rezoning's gonna get approved, but you also don't want the rezoning to be approved unless you know that the plat's gonna be approved. So they end up kind of being conditional on one another. And the same would go with any lagoons or such.
But information from the KDHE on sizing, and I think, you know, runoff mitigation and things like that could come before what you're talking about.
The applicant may be able to answer some more of that. I know that he's been in contact with KDHE, and they're working through the process. And the problem being that it's gonna take a little more time probably to get those answers, and so you're correct. If you wanted to see the specifics on that and the location and the size, it would have to come at a later date.
I think we need to let the applicant talk.
Sure, yeah.
And then we can always ask her questions after he's done. Any males? Yeah, if you're up.
Good evening again, Joshua Blinsky with SBB Engineering.
Remember, talk loud.
Louder? I'm representing the owner, he's not here.
You have to talk into that, just that way they can.
You're gonna have to project yourself.
You gotta project.
Okay, I'm here representing the owner, he's not here, so I'll answer any technical questions you have. So, I guess I'll take those one at a time right now. So as far as the lagoon is concerned, Joni is completely right. The catch-22 is we don't want to go through the entire lagoon design if we don't know if we're going to get the PUD approved and the plat approved. So we need at least a tentative approval from the county before we move ahead and spend the twenty thousand dollars or so to get that final design done. And through the lengthy process, it's about sixty days or so, to get it through KDHE. So it's going to be very difficult to go and get a lagoon design done, all on faith from the owner. He has to make some difficult decisions to do that, to outlay the money, and then come back and say, can I have approval on both of these plat through the city and then the PUD through the county? So, it would be good to have some type of approval or nod to move ahead without, if there aren't any other grave concerns on the project at this point, so that we have some sort of assurance moving forward with getting you the additional information.
So right now, we have no idea what the, how big it would be?
Right, as far as the lagoon is concerned, well, it's just a preliminary layout right now. It depends on the soils, it depends on the final count.
But I mean, on average, are we talking forty by fifty, two hundred by two hundred, what, I mean?
Oh.
Just a rough estimate.
We're hoping to be around two hundred and fifty by a hundred and fifty. A lot depends on a number of factors, the soils, and what KDHE will allow as far as a.
So is it gonna be deeper than wider or wider and deeper?
Right, KDHE requires that, so it will most likely be two cells, primary and a secondary cell. Yeah, it's, right now, we don't anticipate a discharging lagoon. We'd like to do it with a non-discharging lagoon. So it empties by precipitation, evaporation, and infiltration only, so there's no discharge anywhere.
Is there a design for a flood event? I mean, if you get six inches of rain at one.
There's a freeboard that's required, I believe it's two feet on these types of lagoons.
So like, to guarantee there's no discharge, is that what you're getting at, or what are you?
So the way you.
It's overdesigned by, the height's overdesigned by two feet to catch a rain event?
If you understand how the design works. So we have published values for evaporation and rainfall, so we account for that rainfall in the design initially. So we add in the infiltration and the evaporation, and we get a net loss for these evaporative-style lagoons. So yes, it's factored in in the very design of the lagoon. Plus that two-foot of freeboard for any rogue or strange events, the one-hundred-year events to provide that volume, because it's a direct rainfall, there won't be any stormwater running into it. So if there's a six-inch rain, it'll be a six-inch.
Go ahead, Ken.
Couple of questions, if you may. So there's thirty units.
Correct.
Do you have a rough square feet per unit?
For the total duplex, it's around thirty-four hundred, I believe.
So tw- half of that per u- like.
Yep, so seventeen hundred or so.
And are they for homeowners to purchase, or are these rentals?
No, they're rentals, they'll be retained by the owner in Peppertudy. The owner will maintain ownership, they're for rental only.
Okay, and then I guess my last question, because I've seen it in the southern part of Shawnee County, where things are built for good times and they end up being Section Eights. I guess my concern is, some of the people I can, that live in the area, might be concerned if, just to keep the money flow, they could go Section Eight. Is there any guarantee that won't happen?
He doesn't intend them to be low-income or Section Eight at all. They're meant for twenty-five hundred dollars a month rental.
Per, times thirty?
Per, times thirty, yep, so definitely not low-income. He's targeting retirees or close to retirees fifty-five plus for the community, so there's, in his words, no partying or anything like that. No crazy traffic or speeding in and out of there as anticipated.
Are they multi-level or?
Please, everybody.
Okay, everybody's gonna get a chance to talk, so if you guys could just please just keep the comments, keep the noises, everything down. It's late, nobody wants to be here. All the little noises, all the little, I mean, just please be respectful. Is it gonna be two-story, one-story slab?
It's a single-story slab.
It'll be a slab home, okay. Anybody else have any other questions? So, just in, twenty-five hundred a month, slab home, three-bedroom, two-bath?
That's correct.
Twenty-five hundred a month.
Correct, two-car garage.
Two-car garage, on each side, yes.
So, in your opinion, having rentals in this type of residential neighborhood, you don't think that will have any effect on the neighbors' home values going down?
The, and the cost for each one of these structures will be approximately four hundred thousand, and he anticipates an appraisal value of upwards of that, so he's hoping to have around five or six hundred thousand per structure.
Thank you, sir.
I don't think there's any really way to determine whether or not it's gonna affect your home value, but it would definitely affect sellability of like the house next door. Any other questions for the, do you have any other comments you want to make, or you good?
I don't believe so, I'll be available for.
What's represented by this area on this ground?
The stormwater area.
This hatching stormwater?
Yeah, that's catching stormwater.
That's catching stormwater?
Yeah.
This is catching, and this is proposed lagoon?
That's lagoon, so stormwater is directed around the lagoon in these directions, and then discharged in this area here. So we anticipate having a channel around all sides and then having a stair stepped. We have limited room there since we're limited to this twenty percent. That's the size we're hoping, if we have to adjust it at a later date, then it will be.
Okay, next up, is there?
No, I'll get back to him on that.
Is there anybody that wants to speak for it? We're gonna open the public hearing. Okay, if there's no one, are you speaking for it?
In favor first?
In favor, okay. Okay, now we're gonna speak in opposition, and you have four minutes. Yeah, and just for, just, just like the, I don't know if you guys were here for the first one that was, had a lot of people, but, uh, if you come up, sign your name and someone already said what you thought, go ahead and just say I agree with what they said.
Hello, my name is Michelle Gromis. I reside at fifty-four twenty-three Northwest Rochester Road, within a thousand feet of the proposed zoning reclassification.
What was the house?
Fifty-four twenty-three, a month towards the bottom. Got it. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I am one of many who adamantly opposes the zoning change. People choose to live in the country to be away from the city, to have space, not congestion, fresh air, not pollution, peace and quiet, not constant noise, and especially the nature that, and not concrete and buildings. When the south thirty-six acres-
Hold on a second. Can you guys please respect her for four minutes? Go ahead, I'll give you a little more time.
When the south thirty-six acres, which is this here, was orig- as the original lebery property, was sold twenty-one years ago, houses were built on that property following the zoning laws, as the original owner intended in our deed, and how the neighborhood has been established throughout, setting a precedent for this land. When we invested in our property, we fully expected the neighborhood would remain zoned as such. Why does someone purchase property not zone for the type of development that they're gonna create? Why does one property owner have the right to possibly change the zoning laws when the majority of the neighbors in that hundred, in that thousand-foot area opposes it? As is shown in the paperwork that I've given you. And as well as many more, the two hundred and fifty-four petitions that we have signed and from the surrounding neighborhoods, or subdivisions, that she called, um, that use that Rochester corridor, which is quite busy, especially during school, after-school activities. And on the map, you cannot see it, but that is a hill. And it is quite, and they speed down it like crazy. Also concerning are the environmental and fr- and the infrastructure impacts of building fifteen duplexes, which are thirty residences within seven acres. Currently on the approximately thirty-six acres of the thousand-foot radius of the proposed development, there are twenty-five single-family homes. The developer will double that, um, the number of residents and subsequently the population of that area. Considerable impact utilities, wastewater and roads must be accounted for when a population doubles. We expect to know these issues will be addressed and their effect on the existing residences before a rezoning decision is made. People have spent time and money increasing the value of their property. Allowing duplexes with a single cell and possibly a double-cell open-pit lagoon does not encourage the preservation and the best use of the natural features of the site. Properties will be devalued. We'll pay our taxes like we do, but they will not sell for what they should. Those of us who live in this neighborhood do so because of its rural feel and the natural beauty that has remained. We regularly see wildlife like turkey, deers, quail, eagles and bees from our porches. There are trees and grasses that provide habitat for many different animals. Therefore, an environmental impact study must be completed to understand the effects on the wildlife, habitat and infrastructure before rezoning is considered. Please deny this rezoning request. Thank you for your time.
Just a reminder, when you get up there, make sure you sign your name and your address.
And the address?
Yeah. And then you'll also say your name and address when you get up to the microphone as well.
My name is Marsha Armfield and I reside at five-four-one-three Northwest Rochester Road. And that is within the one thousand feet perimeter of the, um, proposed rezoning area. I've lived there for three and a half years, um, and I am against the rezoning. You know, like Michelle said, I've moved there for spaciousness, privacy, nature, you know, which can have, you know, an impact positively on my well-being and quality of life. I'm gonna skip some of this because she did say some of it. The proposed multifamily development, uh, which would provide a condensed living environment, it won't enhance but diminish our neighborhood. The quality of the dwellings, um, was just now for the first time possibly addressed, but I don't feel like that's like, okay, you know, can you please sign here that these are going to be four hundred thousand dollar units, uh, which would obviously be far more acceptable than low-income dwellings. And if, if it ends up being that subsidized, for instance, really our neighborhood has nothing to offer them. There's no amenities close enough, um, such as a grocery store, Walmart, restaurants or banks, if you're talking about, you know, having to ride a bike or, um, ambulate there. And, you know, or will they be that four hundred thousand? The property sizes, um, that have, that are in that one thousand feet perimeter, those, uh, on the west side of the road range from two-point-eight-six acres to thirty-four-point-two-one acres. On the east side of, uh, that perimeter, um, they range from point-five acres to eleven-point-six-four acres. So you can see that, um, you know, that's a, a big draw as to why we all live where we do. So I don't want this neighborhood to become negatively impacted, possibly by similarly uninhabited and incomplete multifamily complexes that already exist on North Topeka, south of Northland Christian Church. They even have close-by amenities without a lagoon, yet they resign, they are not about half inhabited. It doesn't really meet an identified community need, um, when there's locations closer to the city with those amenities and, uh, no lagoon, still vacant. So we hope that the unsuitability for the proposed location will be strongly considered. I think if it is past that large lagoon, um, which will be very significantly perhaps larger than what currently exists at the schools that have been identified, it will be aesthetically displeasing, but possibly the stench that might occur will not be pleasant as well. And as was stated a moment ago, my tax value no doubt will remain the same or increase, but the market value of my home, uh, could potentially plunge. My home overlooks, uh, that current vacant property. So I hope in closing that you please consider the more than two hundred and fifty residents who have signed petitions in the area against the rezoning initiative with more weight than the desires of one individual developer. And unlike the rodeo scenario that's been presented previously, um, you know, there's no restrictions. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna just look out there four times a year and see this alteration to the landscape. It'll be every day forever. Thank you.
You can move that off to the side so that you can sign it-
While you're waiting?
While people are talking, yeah.
I'm Janine Fawley and I live at fifty-four thirty-seven Northwest Rochester Road. And I'm within a thousand feet radius of the subject property. I'm too south. And I speak in opposition to amending the district zoning classification. I will say I acknowledge there is a great general need for affordable housing, as stated before. However, our neighborhood is not the solution for many reasons that will be presented to you tonight. I have many concerns, but for the sake of your valued time, I am speaking only to the topic of traffic and safety. I come before you as a twenty-seven-year law enforcement background and more so as a concerned citizen and neighbor. Points of concern include, but are not limited to the following. The area of Rochester Road affected by the proposed housing project is forty-five mile-per-hour stretch of solid double-lined two-lane roadway with a hill at either end. Rochester Road is the area has no paved shoulder and some areas have a steep, uh, steep ditch or a drop-off. And my ex-husband actually took out one of my neighbor's mailboxes. We had to repair it cause he went off the road. Vehicles generally adhere to the recommended speed limit, but in reality do exceed the limit as I see and hear vehicles pass by my residence. On many occasions, vehicles have passed in the no-passing zone and what is generally higher than recommended speeds as I see and hear the rapid acceleration. I have witnessed a near rear-end accident due to an obstacle in the ditch distracting a driver. There is also the fiery crash in twenty-fourteen due to high speeds on the curve, which is still fresh in my mind as I drive the area or as vehicles cross left of center as they come towards my vehicle. The proposed project with one or two private drives leading out onto the Rochester Road could be potentially hazardous for turning construction trucks, waste management, resident vehicles. There is also a lot of traffic during morning and afternoon hours of commuters and high school students heading to Seaman High School, three-quarters of a mile away. School buses do not go into the private project area, which leads me to wonder where the future children would be picked up by buses as staging on Rochester past a hill could be hazardous. I also envision what traffic would look like adding thirty-plus more families turning onto and traveling Rochester Road during peak times. I also speak to concerns of the ro- the nuisance from the drive from headlights of turning vehicles onto residents closer to the private drive of the project. And I also noted the golden rule number seven. My second and last topic of concern is public safety, adding thirty-plus families into the single-family dwelling agriculture area, the mixed-use or the residential density into an established neighborhood. Should multifamily units end up as rentals? The increase in residents could impact the chances for mischief and crime in the area. It has been proven that there is a direct correlation between a spike in crime in the area as a result of increased residential des- uh, density. Again, Rochester Road does not have a shoulder or paved, uh, shoulder, which would allow for safe foot traffic should potential residents not have proper mode of transportation. There's also no public transportation, grocery or community services nearby. And then I noted the golden rule of number five and number eight. It's my belief, the experience, that many more lives of local neighbors would be potentially adversely impacted in safety and welfare, far more than the financial gain of the participants of the housing project. Lastly, the volume of neighbors in opposition should be a great indicator of whether to approve or deny the request for zoning change. As stated before, I oppose amending district zoning classification change for our neighborhood. Thank you.
I am Monise King Gibbs. I live on fifty-three forty-fifth Rochester Road. I do oppose the rezoning of the Rochester Road. Because of the residential reserve district zoning in North Shawnee County, thirty-four years ago, my family chose North Shawnee County to construct our single-family home on Rochester. In nineteen ninety, Route One zoning was clearly shown by the prior neighboring single dwellings all along Rochester Road. Today, this R and R one zoning history is still evident on Rochester Road by the single dwellings from North Highway twenty-four North to the recent construction, single dwellings even to Ninety-Fourth Road. Please, we are concerned about the change to the residential reserve district zoning history along Rochester Road over the current residents who comply with the R and R zoning. We also are concerned about the existing safety issues of dangerous curves on the peak of the hill, high school student drivers, of course, high school events, bus routes, emergency route and increased speeding that has occurred on Rochester Road. Thank you. Please consider these concerns. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maya Hall. I live at fif- uh, fifty-seven thirty-eight Northwest Rochester Road, within a thousand, um, feet of, uh, the area. And I speak in opposition to this building project. On top of the fact that this is our beautiful home and we don't want it taken over by a ton of buildings and people. Nature and ag- agriculture is sacred and is to be preserved. The land was used for raising cattle and aided in producing good quality, uh, meat. If we ta- if we keep taking those places over, we may end up not having any healthy meat to eat. Plus healthy cow, uh, plus healthy cow manure helps the green nature grow and the green nature produces oxygen which helps us breathe. And it also gives us food, uh, and it also gives us food. Preserving this area is important. There are plenty of abandoned buildings that are already built that could be reused or torn down and rebuilt into the duplexes. Also, the way that, uh, the way the plans are made, as was said before, would not, would not only cause too much hustle and bustle, where hustle and bustle does not belong, but there would be a lot of accidents that, uh, that area is already dangerous at as, as it is. I grew up here and I lo- I love it here. I'm born and raised, this is where, this is where home is, so.
My name is Andre Nelson. Can we put that other map up that we had up there that showed the, the addresses and, not that one? That one.
I live at fifty-five forty-eight Northwest Rochester Road. I've lived there for thirty-three years. I built that house. They wanna put a septic pond across the street from my house. How would you like to live there for over three decades and have to come home and see a lagoon across the street from your house? It's all farmland. It's always been hayed. It's always been grazed. The proposed roads are supposed to come out like right here in front of my house. What are they gonna plow that snow to? They're gonna plow it across Rochester Road, right into my driveway or into my yard. This is a big hill, like she said. I've lived there for decades. I've seen kids, other people, hundred, hundred-and-fifty miles an hour come over that hill. And I'm not lying, a hundred miles an hour. Those roads are gonna be farther up the hill than my drive is. That's so fast and cars coming over the hill. When I pull out, I wanna pull in this lane. So when people come flying over the hill, they have their lane to keep on going. It's ridiculous. I cannot even believe that anything is even being considered. I sat on my porch Wednesday, watched Three Bucks and a Dough Come. I know they were bucks cause they were in velvet. Where do you get that in the city? That's why I moved into the country, not to have somebody put a lagoon across the street from my house. And you can't tell me that that's not gonna take away from my property value. There ain't no way. When I moved there and built that place, I was paying four hundred bucks a month, or four hundred dollars every six months for property taxes, twelve hundred a year. Now I'm paying over three thousand four hundred dollars a year. And you want me to live across the street from a lagoon? We are a gold star family. We have paid the ultimate price for this country. How can you let somebody come in and do something like that to us? I had so much stuff to say that I couldn't even get it all out. My father lives next door to me. The other road's gonna be coming out right to them. How would you like cars coming with lights right toward your house every night? I live out in the country for a reason. We look at the stars, the wildlife. Not thirty more families that are moving in and out all the time. We have little to no crime in the neighborhood and haven't. We have little to no crime in the neighborhood and haven't. What is thirty families that are coming and moving in and out all the time, plus the people that know them that are coming in and out all the time? You don't know. I might as well... Anyways, that's all I have to say about that.
I already signed it.
Gene Eugenin, fifty-four thirty-four Northwest Rochester Road. I've been a resident there probably for twenty-some years. I'm going to go through some of the document and some comments. I know some have been repeated. You've asked some of the questions and hopefully I get it correct on what they're... So, the first part is, we've already talked about traffic and so on. I appreciate that. And I think one of the parts in this is if you're going to have it covered, hidden, that already says that it's a hidden driveway in and out because you said something about bushes or whatever for the scenery. So that makes it harder for people to know that those two streets are there that haven't existed. And I can say the same thing for anybody else. I've had plenty of cars pass me on that double lane, on the double line, where I'm just turning right into my driveway and they just zip right by. And that is the part with the timing and so on. So now you're talking about a hidden entry or exit way mostly for two that are coming out that now don't know about all the traffic. So we talked about three bedrooms, two baths in these dwellings. So if you add that up, that can come up to, let's say, six people potentially per resident. That's a hundred and eighty people in there. Nothing is stopping the volume of people in there. So that's a lot more traffic. That's a lot more sewage. I used to live up in, over in Urban Hills. We did have a lagoon. They got rid of it and I thought the county was actually, maybe it's a different because we're within three mile, but there was a part to get rid of those lagoons. And now we're talking about a lagoon that isn't, that will freeze, so it will fill and potentially it will overflow. And where is that going to go? To the residents east. So that part I don't appreciate. So we also talked about the other residents. So in there, there's a requested action and it talks about there are similar multifamily developments. There's actually only one that I know of within the point-five residence. And that isn't really, I'm kind of confused by the word similar because what does it mean? It's kind of subjective. That was done under a M-two, not an M-one when that residence was put up. They don't have a lagoon. They are actually quad duplexes. There's only one road in and out. So I think it's unfair to try to evaluate what's done over on Topeka Avenue to what this is going to be. They're not really similar, in my view. All right, so we talked about adequate space is going to be allocated. What are the factors of that? Maybe we don't know, but I think that's a hard part to say we're for something that we just don't know enough about. That's why I totally oppose this thing. Sorry if I'm rambling here. All right, so there's... Yeah, the, excuse me, the proposed improvements. I think that's probably enough, but it is a part, there's so many words in here that are subjective that I just don't think we can evaluate it right now. We've got a single level, but nothing's going to guarantee that it's going to stay that way, right? That can change. If it's a single level, there's potential it can go to multi-level. All right? All right.
Time's up.
I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Good job. Subpoor.
Good.
I prepared for five minutes, so I will try to get into four. And I do have a flash drive.
Thank you.
On the screen if that's possible.
Flash drive for images up on the screen.
I think it'd be great to do that.
Seven images I got.
I wouldn't think they would do that.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, will allow us to...
Yeah.
Maybe. We may not be able to since it's an unknown thought.
I just scanned it on the security thing at work before I put these in.
Well, our security here is pretty...
I wish they could just...
Yeah, I don't think that IT will allow us to do the images. I'm sorry.
Well, I, you did give me an email that said I could.
Well, you're able to provide stuff with the flash drive. I'm sorry. If you sent it to me, I could have...
So, my name's Matt Armfield. I live at fifty-four thirteen Northwest Rochester Road within a thousand feet and I'm opposed. I'm opposed for five main reasons. The proposal does not, in my opinion, follow the golden rules. The singles, the images show a single-cell lagoon and he referred to the lagoon repeatedly. Insufficient, is insufficient for multifamily and prone to fail. The potential for groundwater pollution to an existing historic community well on the property. Safety of the traveling public and effect on property values. In the interest of time, I'm not going to talk about everything, but if you read my thing, I'd appreciate it. The golden rules, it violates over half of the golden rules, in my opinion. Zoning uses and character of the neighborhood, none of which fits into the existing rural single-family residential area. Money residences that have been built recently report that they've had to have three hundred feet minimum frontage to build their homes, yet this is not the case here. Suitability of the subject property for uses to which it has been currently restricted. Again, this doesn't align. Third golden rule, the extent to which the removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. It's been discussed, the safety of the kids cresting the blind hill. I think you guys should have a requirement for a turn-in lane for safety, for them to come in and out of there.
Matt, excuse me. Can we please have silence back there so that we can hear? Please. Okay, thank you.
The lagoon issues, respectfully, I'd like to see a requirement for the lagoon approval prior to the permitting of the PUD. The lagoon is just above an unnamed tributary to Indian Creek, which the report specifies. And the fifth golden rule that I think violates is impact of proposed development on community facilities. The community already has water pressure problems where many people have to add pressure pumps. The failed lagoon, again, could pollute the streams and no sewer to support thirty-plus families. I think the sewer should be brought up there if they want to do it. So my second point, the single-cell lagoon insufficiently, is insufficiently for multifamily. Developments such as this should be on sewer. It's been cited that the northern sky is failing. Any lagoon over single-family, as pointed out, is KDHE. I've sat down with the KDHE and discussed this. And if you go to the first tab, I've got the first of three images. To my research, there are no private developer-owned, single- or dual-cell lagoons in the city currently functioning, and I don't think it's a time for experiments. There's a long history of multi-cell lagoons in the area that have failed. I've got three images on the first tab of three, the Murray and Cherry Creek subdivision, Woodgate, and Urban Hills all had multi-cell lagoons that failed and they were forced to bring in sewer. Again, I don't think we should be trying what fails repeatedly. Lagoon, they have to be cared for. This proposal is for rentals and tenants. If they dump Clorox down it, any chemicals, they're not going to do what a person that owns a lagoon should do to make it successful. That'll lead to rapid failure. The KDHE told me that a single-cell lagoon with this much dumping into it, ten years max. And I think you guys should research that. The PUD calls for screening of the lagoon, but the KDHE says you have to have wind crossing it. So, did that count, interruption?
I warned them. I've asked people to be respectful.
My name is Mike Gromas. I live at fifty-four twenty-three Northwest Rochester Road and I'm within the one thousand feet of the proposed development and I am opposed of changing the zoning. I've been a licensed general contractor for thirty-two years and in good standing with the city of Topeka. I want to talk about best practices. Matt just alluded to this. This lagoon is definitely not a best practice. I've got furthermore to add to that, but I did spoke to KDHE's engineer for the wastewater treatment plan and collection systems and asked how development like this deals with wastewater considering it'll support thirty residences. His response, sanitary sewer system is a best practice, not a single-cell open-pit lagoon. There's a much better location for multifamily homes that already is appropriately zoned and has appropriate infrastructure, and that's at Hunter's Ridge. Besides KDHE's inspection of the lagoon, there will be no building inspections. No building inspections, okay? There won't be a footing inspection, there won't be soil compaction, there won't be heating, plumbing, and air. A contractor will have to sign an affidavit saying he's going to build it per the plans, but there will be no inspections out in the county. The last and arguably the most important aspect of a best practice is the traffic present and the lack of a turning lane. When the construction began at Mother Trees Church on Northwest Green Hills Road, they were required to put in a turning lane at their own expense. This should be a condition of the developer. The church traffic there is heaviest around four PM on Saturday and Sunday mornings when the church services are held. Typically, traffic is pretty light on Forty-Sixth Street at that time of day. Meanwhile, the traffic on Rochester Road during those hours that students are on their way to and from school is much heavier. I've witnessed accidents on Rochester Road in which one car rear-ended another. The absence of a turning lane could very well be life-threatening for some of our community's youngest members. For these reasons, I'm strongly opposed for the lagoon, lack of inspections, traffic. I oppose this amendment and changing our zoning regulations. Till tonight, I didn't know they were going to be rentals. And so I would ask anybody here, you here, or consider this. We rent tools. I don't take care of them as good as my own tools. I think there's, I think, I mean, people just don't take good care. We are not opposed, if they want to build their, the three houses they can build, we're not opposed to that, but we're definitely opposed to these duplexes. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Biggs. Along with my husband, we own the property at fifty-four forty-five Northwest Rochester Road. Additionally, we owned the property to the west of that, which although it is plotted for additional development, that will not happen. We bought it and it was plotted. We run cattle out there. I come before you tonight to request that the planning commission deny the request to reclassify the property from RR One to PUD. I'm not sure if it's M-one or if it's M-two. The slides that we saw tonight said M-one. The paperwork that we were handed out in the agenda says M-two. In fact, I'd like to state that another way. What I am asking of you is to retain the classification of the property as it exists now. Natural resource degradation is one of the reasons that I ask for this. It is inconsistent with the commission's function as established by the Home Rule Resolution to allow degradation of natural resources. A second reason that I come before you is to ask or to note that the infrastructure is insufficient as it exists currently. There is substantial and meaningful safety compromises. This would include the residents who may inhabit the newly proposed areas as well as Seaman High School students, USD three forty-five bus routes and those students, families taking their students to and from Elmont Elementary School, traffic to and from the commercial areas down where Dylan's and Walmart is located, as well as the safety in and around the septic lagoon. The septic lagoon as proposed here is not fenced off as the septic lagoons are at Seaman Middle School and at Seaman High School. I believe that the golden rule factors are inconsistent across the board with the request for the use and nature of the surrounding area to be changed. In fact, what is being proposed does not match the rest of the area. I'd also like to note the housing density increase that's being proposed. There are safety concerns around law enforcement and fire safety as some of these homes or residences are plotted out to be less than ten feet apart from each other. If there's only one way in and one way out, how can the volunteer fire department respond quickly enough? Furthermore, I'd like to leave you with one closing thought, and this has been written in a double-blind, peer-reviewed journal, Journal of Criminology, and it's by Stuckey, who is a criminologist, and Offerman, who is a planning use specialist. And they conclude that the higher the population density, the higher the crime rate, the higher the single-family use, the lower the crime rate, and the higher the percentage of multifamily land use, the higher the crime rate. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Carol Gray and I live at sixty-three twenty-four Rochester. I'm not immediately directed, but my concern is the traffic. I go down Rochester all the time. Even the hill they're talking about, currently, it's not even maintained. There's a chunk of asphalt out, the white line's missing. And the reason I'm concerned about the safety, and I previously lived at forty-seven hundred Northwest Potawatomi, my backyard was to forty-six and seventy-five. I made multiple nine-one-one calls on fatality accidents. They started with a stop sign. They put up a larger stop sign. They put up streetlights. There were still fatalities. And at the location where these streets are, I'm concerned because it's in the Valley of Two Hills. And I know everybody's discussed that, but I don't want the people living across from there witness what I've had to. Thank you.
My name is Franklin Piker. I live at fifty-four forty-eight Northwest Rochester Road. I've lived there for over fifty years and I do not like this proposal, especially the traffic on there. The lagoon is going to go right across the drainage on the north side of my property now, down that dead creek there. I do not want no sewage overflow. I do not want the traffic and I want to save our wildlife that we have out there right now. That's all I have to say.
My name is Albert Lanning. I live at seven thirty-six Northwest Page Lane, which was in the thousand-foot radius. And I'm opposed to the increased traffic that's going to be. I have thirty families. Each family probably has two cars, that's sixty cars coming out. Now, maybe they got a kid or two in high school, whatever, old enough to drive. There's additional cars coming out on that road on Rochester. I call Rochester I-70. The way they zoom up and down there, it's incredible. And it's true, they pass on a double-yellow line. There's no regard for anything. We have very little support from the sheriff's office. You don't hardly ever see a car out there. Don't see anybody stopped. You know, once in a while, you might see stopping a kid, but no, it's not a good idea at all. And the sewage lagoon, we'd be just about straight east and the winds in the west, that's undesirable. We lived there fifty-eight years, not ready for a change like that. If they want to build, somebody wants to build a house, that's fine, but nothing that's going to hold all in. Thank you.
My name is Margaret Wilkerson. I'll show you, this is my property right here that I own. My husband, I loved Rochester so much before we got married, he had bought a house up the street from me, so we had to pick one. We chose the larger house, which is north of sixty-second. The plan was to move back to this home because it's smaller when we retire. because it's smaller when we retire. It has a driveway. If that driveway comes out, and I've had this happen with people that aren't coming to my house, they turn around in my U-driveway. I can see people coming out of there. I've forgotten my book or my thing, whatever, and turning in my driveway and going around and around. Cars are going to be coming into my, facing into my property. That is a really slippery hill. I have a ditch that must be this deep and is pretty darn wide. And I have had more cars in that ditch. And I can imagine them coming across the street and landing right in my ditch when it's slick out. I want to thank everybody here. You have done such an eloquent speaking job. And so much that you have said is really, I'm so upset because this has changed our plans. So, I kind of feel like this is, hey, wait and see. Because we're thinking about doing this, but we don't know because we have to do these things and these things in a certain order. Let's just wait and see what it looks like when it's done. And that's a horrible feeling. So, I know that if you live on Rochester, that at 7:00 in the morning is a raceway. People coming and going, mostly going south and then north in the afternoon. It's really busy. And for those two driveways to be there in Andre and Jackie's yard and in my place is just unacceptable. That's the way I feel about it. Thank you all for coming.
Okay. My name's Richard Hall. 5738 Northwest Rochester Road. And I can't agree with these people more. I lived there for 47 years. Watched all of the developments. I've watched the wildlife. My gosh, the wildlife's plentiful out there. And then you want to destroy it, you know? And the, Mr. Leveron has cattle on there. I love cattle, you know? It's natural. But this, what they're doing, uh-uh. That cesspool that you plan on putting in there, that hill, water runs down. You can't accommodate for that. Groundwater pollution seep into the ground. He says he's got it under control. I doubt it. That can't be. There's too much water running there. So, that's what I got to say. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jackie Nelson. I live at 5548 Northwest Rochester. My husband spoke earlier. We've been there for 33 years. We built on my family's property. And I grew up at 5544. I lived my first 19 years. So, 52 years of my life, this is home. This is what my kids grew up, my grandparents, my parents, all my siblings. Just help us preserve what this neighborhood, this community, we have generation after generation. Some of us are on the second, third, and there are some that are on the fourth generation, continuing to live on these properties that we call home. I get very emotional over it. I just ask that you please keep it in your hearts to keep it at RR1 so that our families can feel safe and continue to enjoy this environment that we have as our safe haven. Thank you. I am opposed to this, by the way.
Hi, I'm Kim Strube. Me and my husband Steve, we're new to the neighborhood, new to the Rochester neighborhood. Within the last three years, we purchased 5636. We've done some major tree clearing. We had some plans for that property. There was a fire years ago to a home that was there. Left chain leak fence and a foundation. We dug it all up, cleaned the property up. It is beautiful now. Within the last year, we had the opportunity to purchase 5630. And I don't know if how many of you are familiar with that property, but it was a blighted property. We purchased it. Within the last year, we have removed it, demolished it, with the hopes to potentially build a home on the backside of that lot. Which now, we'll, you know, we'll probably reconsider that when we had beautiful pressure in Dan's property to look at currently, to think about waking up and looking at a residential duplex property across the street isn't necessarily desirable. It's frustrating because we have recently purchased those properties with a dream to build and move out to the country from the city, and that may not happen. And I'll just add one more thing. My husband and I used to own a duplex in Hunter's Ridge at 49th Street. We owned it, we lived in it. Our entire cul-de-sac was full of rentals, barking dogs, drug deals. And so, that's what I think we have to look forward to, potentially coming across the street. And we've lived it. It wasn't that far away. It wasn't on Northwest Topeka Boulevard. It was in Hunter's Ridge. And I feel sorry for all those people who own the beautiful homes in that neighborhood that have to reside next to that. So, that's all I have to say.
Good evening. My name is Kent Biggs. I reside at 1302 Northwest 52nd Terrace, which is right here, right above 5445, which is also, as my wife stated earlier, our property as well. So, we are affected by this as being right next to the property that's being proposed to be changed. I don't really want to stand out my backyard and look across my other property and see and smell a sewer lagoon and see a bunch of houses or duplexes up there on that property. I did try to buy that property. It was up for auction. Obviously, I didn't get it. I wanted to keep it the way it is now. I wanted to put my cattle out there. I know it was brought up earlier about the plat that's out to the west, the 40 acres there directly west of the 5445 address, as well as additional 20 acres straight west of my house. It is currently platted, but it will never be developed because I own it, and it will not happen. The 80 acres that are off of Northwest 50th Street to the south of my property there, that will be developed. It is in the process or was recently replatted by a developer. But he has to put in a sewer. And that's one of the main things that is delaying his development along with the high interest rates and the economy the way it is right now. He's put all that on hold. So, luckily, that's going to stay hay ground and farmland for the time being. So, with that, I have a couple of questions. One is about the lagoon and the lack of a sewer system. If I remember correctly, there was a development planned, I'm not sure if it came before you guys or not, on Rochester Road, just north of Soldier Creek, on the east side of the road. And they wanted to put in something similar to this, I believe. But the city said, no, you have to connect to the sewer. You can't have whatever method of septic system they wanted to have. I don't know if it was lagoon or lateral lines or what it was. But I'm curious as to why this one's being allowed if we're within the three miles of the city limits, which I don't really agree with that whole premise. But if the city says no to that there, why are they going to allow this up here to not have to tie into a sewer line and allow a lagoon? So, I'm not sure how that is different than that other location was. Also, Northern Sky, which this has been compared a lot to, is owned by out-of-state development or property owners. It's not local. They're not here. They're not keeping that property up. It's not being maintained. The septic system, from what I understand, is failing because it was built on a junkyard. But there's a lot of comparisons being made to Northern Sky. I don't want to see this go in. I don't want to see it be sold off to out-of-staters to just let it go. Thank you.
I am Tammy Hall. I live at 5738 Northwest Rochester Road, within the 1,000 feet. And I've lived there 25 years, raised my children there. Love the country. I'm a country girl from my childhood, from eastern Kansas. And I live there because it's gorgeous. It's beautiful. It's country. The fresh air. I don't know if, some city people don't even know what fresh air smells like. Also, if somebody wants to build something to improve the community, they need to go find someplace that's not beautiful, not already serving as a purpose for the whole community to be at peace and at ease and have cattle raised on it and have hay raised on it. This land has served the community as it is. It doesn't need to be housed to be an improvement. As a matter of fact, when I read on the papers and it was calling it the improvements to be made, I'm like, that is not improving that land. That is not improving our community. Our community is a rural agricultural community. And that's the way it needs to stay. And if you want to build something, go down to the old Kmart building. Put apartments in there. Go down to the impoverished areas where houses are dilapidated and buy up those properties with generous finances so that those people can go find a better place to live. And then tear those places down and build something more beautiful than what's there. If you build in a place that's absolutely gorgeous the way it is, you're not improving. You are destroying. We don't want more asphalt, concrete, and buildings. We want homes and families and agricultural land. And it needs to stay that way. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Lynn Holcomb. I live at 6327 Northwest Rochester. Been around that property for about 70 years. I really didn't know what to think about this development until I got here tonight. And I didn't like it, I didn't think. But I thought maybe these are going to be nice duplexes and they'll be for sale. No, they're going to be rentals. Sometimes rentals don't turn out the way they're intended to. Been there, done that. You know, when the economy does its ups and downs and whatnot, every once in a while, you can't rent something for $2,500 a month. So, what happens in an '08, '09, '10 recession, and you have to start putting in somebody for $1,250 just to try to make your mortgage payment? I don't think because we're representing a value of a $400,000 building, that doesn't mean it's always going to be that way. And I don't believe that anybody setting up here, with the exception of perhaps the property owner's representative, nobody can say with a straight face that they think 15 duplexes to be rented are going to increase property value. They will not increase property value. They will detract from property value. There's all kinds of other reasons that everybody's brought up tonight, but they will not enhance property value. Duplexes are normally built as a buffer. They're a buffer between commercial development. Usually, it starts out commercial, apartments, duplexes, then single-family. That's the way it goes. Who needs this density? Does somebody at the county want the density? I'm guessing not. The only person I see wanting this density is the developer because it has to do with the dollar amount involved. I would suggest that it's completely out of context and out of character for the neighborhood that it's in. I'm very much opposed, as you might be able to tell. And I would respectfully ask that you decline this request for rezoning to whatever it is that allows duplexes. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Kendell Sekler. I live on 921 Northwest Silverstone. I am outside of the 1,000 yards. I just have a lot of questions. The Northwest Silverstone, or Rochester, has a narrow bridge between your zoning and how would that affect it with the ice and snow that will be coming down in wintertime? And how traffic's going to be impacted due to the snow and the 30-plus families that are going to be in there? And I do also want to state that, you know, they're trying to shove as many families as they can into one small area. I don't know why we want to have such big volume in such a small area. And that's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak against?
Thanks for having this meeting. I appreciate it. My name is Steve Goldner. I live at 1530 Northwest 82nd Street. I've been in the excavating business since I was 14. I've built single-family lagoons. I've built eight lagoons out of Jeffrey Energy Center. I know they're man-made, just like houses are man-made, and they're not built. Nothing's perfect. So, eventually, they're going to fail. I can guarantee you that. Concrete in a basement will crack. And a lot of times, just a slab out on the ground, it's going to crack. The concrete guys will guarantee that. I just almost bet that where those ponds are at, they're probably spring-fed. They probably don't realize what it's going to take to build those lagoons there. I'm assuming they'll probably have a liner in them. The runoff from the streets are going to run to the ditch or to their detention ponds. I built several detention ponds. I just wanted everybody to know that that sort of thing can happen and fail. Thanks for listening.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Well, we got the rebuttal first. Do you want to have a rebuttal?
That was a very long period there. A lot of, a lot of people's weak speaking. I appreciate that. I heard everybody there and tried to digest that as much as I could and come up with a response. Reminder, though, I'm just a consultant. I'm not the owner. So, I received a number of dirty looks. I just keep it in mind that I'm just trying to work a project here for the owner. So, from what I understood, there were quite a number of comments on the traffic. I understand that. The lagoon, the sizing, and the density, and then the quality of the families that could move into the development. I'll reiterate some of the things I said first. The owner intends to rent to retirees or 55-plus. I'm not sure how he's going to police that. I understand the question. I believe it'll be on the application. He doesn't intend to have large, young families there. The lagoon itself is not a discharging lagoon. I've heard a lot of that. It will not, it does not have an outlet structures. There's two types of lagoons. Outside of a single-family residence, they all have multiple cells. It's not zoning correctly on the plan. I just showed the exterior, the out- It's not zoning correctly on the plan, I just showed the exterior, the outline of the total lagoon. So it's required to have two cells by KDHE. Uh it's not proposed to discharge anywhere, it's all evaporation and infiltration. There will need to be a geotechnical report performed in the area. Residential lagoons for single families do not need to be inspected, but if it goes through KDHE, it will require that. It has strict specifications for its building and testing. It can only have a minimum or a maximum of a quarter of an inch per day through the bottom of the lagoon. So we have to test the soils and compact it appropriately and test it. So it doesn't. Uh there's KDHE requires the lagoon not to be in a sensitive groundwater area, which it isn't. I heard the tributary, the unnamed tributary was mentioned. It does not affect that area, it's not in a sensitive groundwater area, otherwise we had a problem. Traffic, I understand completely. You're already experiencing traffic from the north, uh past the properties. It's well within the right of the county to request a traffic report. They have not done so, I assume because they don't believe that it's required, but maybe we can talk about that further, Joni, to see if it may be given the, the amount of response here tonight. The density, yes, the owner would like as many as he can fit on the property. We are restricted to a very small area of the overall property, so that's why he's trying to fit it in there that way. It's a private drive, so it will not be, the snow removal will not be done by the county. He'll be responsible to, for snow removal. He plans to have a management agency take care of all the rental applications and anything involved with that. I believe it's called RMS. Mowing will be by a separate maintenance company, so regular, uh they'll maintain any landscape. I believe one of the first comments was that there was going to be a lot of vegetation in the way. We're required to maintain site triangles from entrances so you can see appropriate distances down the road. I'm sure you all experienced a tree when you're getting up to an intersection, required to have those site triangles so those won't be blocked. Especially in an instance where there's a lot of talk about there being traffic and a lot of speeding out there. I, there, there were so many comments there. I believe I hit the high points, oh, the lagoon is required to have a fence and screening. Fence by KDHE, screening by the county. Generally, I see the arbor vitae, those tall cylindrical greenery shrubs that grow about fifteen to twenty feet tall. People like to put to screen the view. So that would be most likely along the road and actually most likely all the way around to screen it. Uh that's yet to be seen. The design for the landscaping is generally submitted with the site plan review, so we have not picked any species or anything like that at this point. I, I think that's all I recall right now, so uh thank you.
Okay, hold on just a second, you got a question for him?
Sure.
My hat's off to you, that's, it's, you've got a tough job tonight. So uh if I understand this right, you've got thirty units at twenty-five hundred dollars.
Correct.
And I think everybody should make money, that's seventy-five thousand a month and nine hundred thousand a year if I did my math.
Sounds about right.
Yeah. I think, and it's American, I, you can't stop somebody for doing this probably, but I don't think that, that twenty-five hundred a month in Shawnee County is that doesn't fly too hard, I don't think, for retirees or whatever, you get it if you can get it. But I saw the places over there behind Sam's, that they tried to do twenty-five hundred a month. And the times went tough and then it went Section Eight. So my, my hat's off to you, I, well, it'll go where it goes, but uh there's just a lot of, you could see a lot of questions here tonight. Thank you.
Uh I, I'm not involved in any of the financial aspects. But I, I can certainly take that information back.
And you, one more, Josh. And I think the people would be more happier if they weren't rentals, if they were just just regular duplex owners.
Uh yeah, I understand that. I, I could speak to the owner, convey that information. There's some logistical issues with that. Right now, we have a single lot with all of these because he was wanting to retain ownership. If we were to sell those individually, they would have to be on an individual lot. So the plat wouldn't work the way it is. And I, I'm not really sure how that works with individual lots, like Joni was saying, having the on-lot septic system, if you have all separate. So there's just, it's just a different uh way of doing it that I'm, I'm not really sure about all the specific requirements. This works for what we have proposed, but I, I can certainly bring that information back to the owner and discuss that.
I think you're good.
Thank you.
So this time we'll end the public hearing. Uh does anybody have anything they wanna say?
Mike, I got a question for Joni. What's the county stance on uh lagoons for single families? Right now, are we still, you know, are we in the mode to allow those if you wanna put one of those in? And then are there any that you know of still serviceable lagoons that would, that are in the, I mean, other than the high school, the middle school? Is there anything else like this?
Um I can't say in regards to other lagoons similar, I mean, there are lagoons all over and in.
I mean, is the county trying to move away from lagoons?
No, um no, so we, our primary preference when it comes to anything outside of the sewer. So, so to answer one of the questions in regards to the sewer septic. In the county, if you're with, if your property is within two hundred feet of a sewer system, then you're required to connect to the sewer. There's a lot of county and a lot of development that is nowhere near two hundred feet to a sewer connection. And not only that, but the sewer's provider has to be willing for the connection to be made. So if you're connecting to the Sherwood Sewer or the City Sewer or whatever, if you're within the two hundred feet, then you can connect. If you're not close to it, then you're not required to connect. Even if you are within two hundred feet, if there's something that's preventing you from connecting like rock or significant blockage, whatever it may be, then you may not be required to connect. So our next preference above and beyond sewer would be septic. Now you have to understand that the county isn't a sewer provider. We do have Sherwood, which we oversee, and there are some other smaller sewer districts that are kind of quasi-sewer. But in general, the county doesn't have a sewer system. And so we're reliant on the ability to connect to those sewers when possible. And in general, that doesn't happen. So then any other development, then the option is septic. And um for a single-family home, septic is completely suitable unless there's a reason why your property wouldn't allow you to have a septic, that's why you have perk tests, that's why, you know, they come out and test it ahead of time, is to determine whether or not you can get a septic. There are some options aside from septic, but our environmental code doesn't necessarily allow for all of those. If they review and change the code, there may be methods of operating something other than a septic. Lagoons are possible, but they would probably be one of the fewer choices when it comes to a single-family residence. Anytime we have development like this come up with a couple of different homes, then a, a lagoon system is usually the, what's brought up. But the developer has to be willing to move forward with the development and to do the lagoon because it's a heavy cost, it's a lot of maintenance, it's a lot of monetary input. And so a lot of times those developments don't move forward. And so, you know, I can't necessarily speak to a lagoon on residential, but there are lagoons on commercial businesses and schools and such all over Shawnee County.
What about the water service?
The water service here is rural water district. And as a part of our review, when we send out these cases, we send them out to fire departments, rural water districts, evergy, the townships, we send them to Public Works with Shawnee County, we send them to the City of Topeka, we send them to Environmental Health. We got very little concern back on this. The rural water district didn't have any comment. And neither did the fire station or the fire department.
And then you said the county engineer had no, I guess it's the county engineer that was that.
Public Works County Engineer, right, yep.
On, on the traffic study?
He didn't make a recommendation for a traffic study, I'm happy to follow up with him. He doesn't typically come to these meetings, and so I can't ask him outright. But, you know, we can absolutely do follow-up to see why a traffic study wasn't requested in this situation.
Yeah, I mean, I guess two problems for me are, I mean, I, number one, the lagoon, I feel like it'd be nice to see, you know, something from the KDHE or, you know, the design or, you know, more information on that lagoon ahead of time before we're making a decision. And then, you know, the traffic's been brought up a lot, I mean, I've drove the road. You know, headed southbound, it is, it's coming down a hill. And I, I, it looked as though the entrances were marked up there as to where those were gonna come out and, you know, I don't know, it felt a little tight to me, right? And I'm not an engineer, not the guy that reviews that, uh but would like, you know, would have liked to have seen something kind of ahead of time to address that.
Ken, I know you got something to say.
Oh, I do.
Here's your chance.
This is a, this, this is a project for somebody that has an idea to make some money. And I think that's great because it's American. I think maybe rentals should be more lined up where there are rentals already. And that seems to be more of a fit to make money. I'm, I'm not familiar with that area, Hunter's Ridge, what, I don't, that's just not where I, I don't go there. But I know that uh out the southwest in the Auburn Dover area, if someone was to come up with this idea of out in the middle of nowhere, this may not be out in the middle, I don't know. But, you know, bingo, there's sixty or seventy people living across the road and rentals. I'm sure that my phone would be lighting up. But uh I can't stop it from happening, I can give you my opinion, the county commissioners can overrule anything we do tonight. But uh I just think that uh he's got a good plan to make some money, I just think he's got the wrong spot, so. So that's where I'm at. I can't, I can't, he's the, he's, I can't do that.
There's a picture of the water.
Nope. We gotta follow the rules.
I uh, I, I mean, I see everyone's passion about not wanting this and I, I understand that. I'm with you as far as the lagoon. It just, it doesn't seem like that's the best place to have it at all. So I'm trying to understand the lagoon portion in that area, especially for that number, you know, the, the number of rentals that plan to be there and the number of people in that area seems strange to me. So I don't understand that. I also don't understand the traffic study, why there wasn't one. And I know that seems to be a lot of the concern here. It seems to me that if everyone here also went down to the sheriff's office and told them about the traffic problems that's happening here, you guys would be well-equipped to be able to make them do something about what's happening on Rochester. Because it, it, everybody talked about their concerns and it is leading up to a school and it seems like there has to be something within reason that should be done. Whether that's lowering the, uh, the miles to thirty miles an hour and hoping that people follow those rules? I mean, I don't know, if the sheriff is out there monitoring everything a little bit more often. But, you know, with, with uh great things come great responsibility. And if you're trying to raise some great children out there and, and have some law-abiding citizens and then by goodness gracious, they should slow down and not be going a hundred miles an hour. So I feel like that's one thing that seriously needs to be addressed. But my concerns are, I, I feel like we have to have some sort of traffic study in that area, especially with, you know, thirty to sixty cars that would be using that space. And, and then just more information about the, about the lagoon. To me, that just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem to fit that right where it is and with the neighborhood being there. Something seems off in my opinion about that, so I don't know. But you said it's like the chicken and the egg and how do you do that? So I'm not sure what the answer is with that, but I don't know, tho- those are the two things that are my concern right now. So I'm try, I'm, I'm trying to figure that out in my head.
I think they pretty much covered everything that I'm thinking. So I'm, I live up north, I live on Rochester, I'm about three miles north of this. Went to Pleasant Hill, went to Northern Hills, went to Seaman, driven that road a gazillion times. Like I said before, the thing I struggle with being on the planning commission is nobody wants the government to tell you what to do with your own property until you want the government to tell your neighbor what to do with their property. It just is what it is. I look at being on here to try to be a representation of North Topeka. I would have a lot better time with this if there wasn't thirty families gonna move into seven acres. That's, that's my issue, I have a huge issue with the rental part. Because yeah, as you said, he, he doesn't intend to do this, he doesn't intend to do that. But like was said, you gotta pay your bills. And if you got a bunch of open buildings not being rented, what are you gonna do? You're gonna, you're gonna rent them for what you can rent them. I mean, the bank doesn't care if, oh, you're only, you're only gonna rent it to fifty-five plus, okay, we'll wait to, we'll wait to get the money from you. I, I don't like the sewer thing, I think the sewer thing's a bad idea. I understand the one guy showed that, you know, these other areas had the sewers, they closed, but if you also heard the, the lagoons. They failed, but also they failed and then they were forced to put in sewer. It's not like the lagoon's gonna fail and they'll be like, oh, we're just gonna make you keep using the, the failed lagoon. But I just, I don't think I could vote for it just because of the, the fact that, you know, if he would've came in here and said, here's a dead-end road, we're gonna put trees on both sides, we're gonna have six houses and we're gonna sell them. I believe all of the duplexes, there's a really nice duplex area on Brickyard. I think it's like the fifty-four-hundred block or something. It's up on a hill and I think all those duplexes are sold. They have a homeowner's thing where they come in and they cut the grass and all that stuff. I've had some family members live in there before and they're really nice. Like I said, intentions are great until they don't work out. And I just have a feeling that this is gonna turn into a, a bad situation if we allow it in that area, so. That's where I'm at on it.
Does anybody wanna make a motion? Do you have, do you have the easy option?
Well, I mean, I have the option for the recommendation to approve, so if you wanna go beyond that and do something different, I can give you.
So we have to, we have to, yeah.
Oh, you don't have to approve it, you have every opportunity to do whatever. Right. I can give you language similar about deferring, which could, I could use it as an example from the prior conditional use. You have the option of continuing to another date, approving with conditions, denying.
I'll make a motion that we uh don't approve this project as presented.
I just, that would be just to make a motion to deny it.
I'm, okay, I make a motion that we deny it as presented.
And I figure if the county commissioners look at it, they, they want us to look at it again, then they'll kick it back to us. But at this point, I just, yeah.
I would, I would second that motion.
Josh screening?
Uh yes.
In Corbett?
Yes.
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 Chad Gierhut?
Yes.
With a unanimous vote, the motion to deny the item is approved. And the item...
Motion to recommend.
Motion to recommend denial is approved. And it will be heard by the county commission on July eleventh at nine a.m.
So even with, just for a notation, even with a motion and approval to recommend denial, it does still go in front of the Board of County Commissioners at the July eleventh meeting. And then if they can either also deny, they can send it back to the planning commission for further direction and consideration. Nine a.m. Seven oh seven Quincy.
Uh, motion?
No, hold on.
You can leave, but you just, you can't start talking in here, 'cause we got little things that we gotta do. We're almost done, but you guys are free to leave, just please wait.
Move away from the door.
Move, yeah, please go outside away from the door and talk.
And don't push on the door when you leave, just wave at the little sensor and it will open. If you push and pull on the door, it'll break.
Okay, so there... Is there any other public comments on non-agenda planning zoning items?
No.
No. Do we have discussion of any planning-related issues?
No.
I will note one thing, Chad Gierhut, who's the planning authority, or does what we're talking about, planning and planning, the county. So we're back to just three of us in the office, we show ourselves over words.